Is that really right? Pollak, Tuvin, Sefra, let's wait till Tricia.
That's dead on file.
Here they come. I can't find yours either.
That's okay. I figured you lost them both.
Okay, thanks.
You can change this, it'll be right.
Yeah.
What are you, cellular? It's still five o'clock.
We good now? Five o'clock, 20 seconds after.
We're leaving the tower, so we can.
Official town time?
Town time, what'd you say?
When's the tower coming up?
The what?
The drill.
Not today.
No!
Don't even. All right, we're gonna open up the public hearing at five o'clock for the purpose of going over any discussions on budget. It's your public hearing.
Nope. It's actually not.
It's not their public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
No, it's a budget meeting.
Oh, a budget meeting, oh, excuse me, yeah, a budget meeting. But, like, what do you got to say? Anybody got anything to say? Well, we're waiting for everybody. Show up.
Where's our budget meeting?
I think this is everything.
Are they supposed to show up? Anyone?
I favor email.
Is it? Budget committee?
They've been invited.
Oh, okay.
They made their final vote.
They did. I see the changes here.
Should've told them we're grabbing food and drinks.
One thing I can say, B-19 will be removed.
Go to B-19.
B-19.
Hi Cindy.
Hi Steve.
What was it, B-19?
Remember now, I made a mistake saying this is a public hearing, gotta go.
Oh, do you have the copy of the warrant?
B-19, see if the voters of the town will... Look. You girls ready?
Sixty-five.
Okay.
Okay. B-19 says to see if the voters of the town will vote in accordance with 30a MRSA to increase property tax levy limit by, in the event that the municipal budget approved, and the following articles will result in a tax commitment greater than property tax levy fiscally in 2020, it's gonna be removed. Okay?
We don't need to raise it this year.
Okay, so we have to make a motion to...
We don't need the article, because we don't need to override it.
Right, but if we approved everything the way it was last time, do we have to have a motion to remove it?
Remove that.
All right. Per treasurer and town manager, I make a motion to remove B-19 from the town rangelie warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, approved. Your hands didn't go up, Cindy, right? I didn't see it.
It went up.
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
So, prior to that, we were supposed to decide on whether or not we wanted 7% or 9% on Article B-2, correct? And we had not decided on that, so either it has to be 7% and 3%...
Let's talk to John, let John answer that, because he's got some information on that.
Okay, I'm just saying which articles they affect.
Yep, yep.
And then the other one was on B-9.
Let's get that one done, and then he'll... Both of them related, so he's gonna talk about that too. Go ahead, Joe.
The issue is the 4% we're allowed between what we charge and what we give back in the event of a late payment. That's how this all came about. So, state treasurer recommended 9. I don't know why, because it seems out of line to me. It seems too high and misacross. Last year we had 7, which made it for Article B-9, the 3% was appropriate, okay? So if you kept it at 9, to go with the treasurer's recommendation, B-9 would have to be increased to 5%. So I think, given the economy, and Dennis Markey asked me from the floor of the hearing what my recommendation was, I had to tell him I always recommend the state treasurer's recommendation, but in this case, I don't think it's right. I don't know where he's getting it. And when you look at who's paying that, it's the people who are least likely to be able to pay their taxes that can pay that extra interest rate. So, I don't think we're there yet to justify a 9%, so I'd say 7 would be...
That way, we can stay at 7 and 3, and only this first one gets changed.
Right, 7 would be fixed. 9 would be changed to 7 and leave the 3 alone.
Okay.
That's my advice, I guess.
Is everybody good with that? That explanation?
Yes.
Did you?
Yeah, here Donnie explained it to us at the budget hearing.
Need a motion?
I make a motion on Article B-2 to see if the voters of the town rangelie will set the rate of 7% interest to be assessed by the town after the due dates on delinquent taxes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So move.
I make a motion on Article B-9 to read, to see if the voters of the town rangelie will vote to...
Nothing's changing there, just so that you know.
That's 3%. We had mentioned 5% before.
No, no.
You're gonna leave that at 5%?
If we stayed at 9, we would've changed that to 5, but since you went to 7, we can leave it at 3.
So, where we read them all individually at the last meeting, we don't, and we don't have to do that again at the public hearing?
Yeah, you don't have to change that.
Okay.
You're gonna approve the whole warrant?
Okay.
At the final, you know, when it's finally done, so that'll take care of all that.
I just thought we'd already done that.
Oh.
Okay.
B-4 needs to be changed.
B-4? Yeah, there's another one for B-4.
B-4 needs to be changed.
That's on sewer.
That's 9%, it should be 7, same reasoning.
Okay, thank you.
I'm taking a motion on B-4.
I make a motion to amend Article B-4 to see if the voters of the town rangelie will set a rate of 7% interest to be assessed on unpaid sewer charges.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So move. Give me some more spots on the warrant articles, please. Whether there's some discussion.
Let's see. Article B-20, we only revisit those budget lines that are relevant to town essential services. I think we identified that last year.
B-what?
The essential services, on B-20.
Oh, 20, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. So there should be that reference in there.
That will be, see the, well, and the town report is followed by that asterisk.
Okay.
So in the town report, the explanation will be in there.
Okay.
And then in the description pages. Anything that has an asterisk has a further description located in the town report.
Anything else on that, Cindy?
Did, John, is this where you said you would pull in the undesigned fund balance carry form?
No, it's under the revenue.
Okay.
Should be the last article.
B-21, good?
Could you go back to B-20? We have a problem with those kind of articles, because when you have a debt service payment, that's a payment, you know, you can't pay 312 for your debt service. When you pay your town's insurance premium, they usually do the first day of the fiscal, you have the whole $40,000, so it doesn't fit. Some things don't fit a blanket article like that. You know, I understand the concept that, you know, you need some authority. If the whole budget failed, you have to have some authority to keep doing business.
Right.
You know, until the budget gets finally passed, but just wanted to point that out, that there are a few categories where we really have no say. If the town voted that, and the debt payment was due on July 1st, we would have to pay that.
Right.
Full amount.
So should be worded differently?
If anybody wanted to challenge it. I don't know how you'd reword that. I hadn't really thought about it, but there are a couple of occurrences where you have no choice. You have to pay the bill when it's due.
Well, I don't think you can reword this one. I think the only thing you could do is to include a warrant article that describes the things that are gonna be paid no matter what, and approve that.
And there aren't that many. We'd have to go through and see which ones really would be impacted by that. And you have to know the timing, when the debt payments would due, and when the insurance... Mostly, it's, my recollection, the insurance was always due day one.
Okay, Tricia, uh, Tracy, you mean?
Is that something I could include in the asterisk definition of the article?
Yeah, an asterisk. All debt service is gonna be paid at the point due.
Pay regardless, yeah.
Terms and description, that'll cover it. Go ahead, Donnie.
And one-time annual payments.
Isn't there a thing for essential services, that if it doesn't pass, we use the figure from last year until they figure it out?
Yeah, that's on your policy.
What's that?
That's a policy.
Right.
That's what I mean.
That's our fund balance.
And that would, that would, insurance would be essential.
That's what I had in Mexico, that we use last year's budget until we get the thing correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it.
So we're good on that? We all passed 20 now? Anything, 21? Let's do it this way. Moving on down, who's got something else as we go through that's ready to talk about? Cindy, I'll start with you.
Do you mean the C articles moving forward?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so for the reserve...
Tell us, tell us where you are, Cindy.
So that would be the first C article, so that's page four.
Yep, C1.
I'll just throw it out there. I'd like to cut the fire department reserve request to $25,000. I know that the chief has requested a replacement vehicle for next year, but we just acquired, bought that vehicle three years ago, along with the ladder. It was kind of a joint venture, and I think I'd like, I'd like to keep the fund request at, consistent with prior years. I'm glad Rebecca's here, because the airport reserve, we've put in, we put in $25,000 last year, and $15,000 the year before, and where you're expecting, the airport's expecting this influx of money. In the past, we've, we have shifted money around in the reserve accounts, so we didn't have to raise the money. So, I'm wondering if we can't take the $25,000 from last year, and the $15,000 from the year before, and distribute it to our request this year, so we don't have to raise it.
Okay, we have no request this year. There's zero requests.
Exactly, so it would be from last year and the year before.
So you would like to transfer that to something else?
Yeah.
To what?
Well, we've got a downtown revitalization request of $50,000, we've got a sewer reserve request for $50,000, you know, so, but I...
So you've got $40,000 in the airport reserve. What do we have total, 109?
I have to look. The only thing is, is you have to make a warrant, because the townspeople voted for that money to be in there.
Yeah, and that's what, because that's what I talked to Donnie about.
That's what we had to do before, when we were shifting, I mean, we did it like three years ago, four, you know...
If you close an account, or you move money from one reserve fund to another, townspeople have to authorize it.
Exactly, so we, we did a lot of shifting around, I don't know, three or four years ago, with these accounts that were dead, and, and just, but I just think, if we didn't have to raise $40,000, I mean, it's just a thought, I would...
Good thought. Let's go back to your first discussion with the fire department.
Okay.
And let's resolve that. I'm sorry, you had your hand up?
No, go ahead.
All right, so back on the fire department, let's hear everybody else's thoughts on, on the suggestion that we cut his request to 25. Just want to point out that, that he brought a, a situation to us about his, his emergency response truck, that they got a estimate to have this thing fixed correctly for over $14,000.
That's... He's, he's getting that. He, he, he has that request. I think that was my other thing. He's already requesting $75,000 for a new light rescue vehicle. So, that $75,000 is in there. It's fine. They can't fix the heavy rescue that currently exists. So I'm just, I'm just commenting on, you know, what he has earmarked for next year is a $400,000 engine 3 replacement, and we haven't had engine 3 that long, and I understand, you know, the, you know, his focus on the life cycle of, of these vehicles, but our, you know, our prior fire chief thought it was a fine purchase three years ago. So I, that's, that's my reasoning, is he's, he's gonna get his new light rescue, because the heavy rescue is not repairable. So this would just be for reserve, for future, for future things down the road.
Any other comments?
Usually put money away so we don't have a big expense all at once, so I don't see why we would sway away from that, because those fire trucks are extremely expensive.
I'd like to hear from the chief, but that's not gonna happen.
Well, we did hear from the chief early on. Anything?
I will specifically hear.
Yep.
I, I, I just think that, that with the new vehicle that they just purchased last year, like I said, I think that that was supposed to be a trade-in, and then it, now it's a lease, so it's the extra expense of that, so I guess if we could reduce it, I would say reduce it, but...
Can I just, in regards to prior fire chief recommend, you know, thought process that this vehicle was, was adequate to the new fire chief, and his opinion on this vehicle, and then we have this $14,000 quote for repairs, I think it's in the town's best interest at this point, where we have mixed review of this vehicle, that we look at an outside perspective, and, you know, honest quote, because there's been inconsistencies in numbers or repair thoughts from our prior mechanic. Nothing to go against him at all, but there's just, I think there's worth another look at that outside of in-house.
Yeah, I'm sorry I brought up the fact, the first response vehicle, because Cindy is correct. What I was trying to illustrate was that there are some expenses that are unforeseen. I'll get to you, Cindy.
Yeah.
There are expenses that are unforeseen, and Dave's point is speaking exactly to that. When you stop taking money out of the request, I mean, I understand it's a $25,000 increase, and so that's certainly something that needs to be verified and, and understood, but he did point out to us in his, in his deliberations when he was here, the first and then again the second time, that there are trucks that are very old to begin with, even though it seemed to be good from somebody in the past, and casting no dispersals on any previous fire chiefs. There are, as he spoke to me today, there are NFP guidelines that if we chose to follow them, we'd be turning all three of our first big vehicles over. Well, Maine doesn't do that, because mostly volunteers in the state of Maine, but he is being cognizant of, if you walk out in the firehouse right now, you're gonna see a pool of water underneath one truck, because it leaks constantly, and they have a hard time figuring out how to fix it. So there are these things, and the question is, becomes, in, in the reserve account, do we continue with $25,000, which has been a historical number, or do we respect his motion? I will get right to you. His request of $50,000, knowing that he perceives something going on, that's where this discussion, as Cindy pointed out to me. Go ahead, Rebecca.
And actually, the 18, 19 was $25,000, but if you look back before that, it was $50,000 year after year.
Okay, Cindy.
I guess I just want a clarifying question from, from Keith. So, Keith, were you talking about the, the heavy rescue replacement, that you think we need a second opinion as to whether that front-end issue can be repaired or not?
Yes, within the areas of that vehicle itself, yes. On the other side of that, I do think that that vehicle is impractical for what, I agree with Mike in regards to the general concept of that vehicle, that it's not of the correct size to maneuver through some of these driveways that we do have. I think there's a better shoot, so I think his request for the new vehicle makes sense. I do, however, think that it's, it's worth, it's already in our best interest to look at other second opinions.
So maybe we'll just sit in silence for a moment?
Just for, for so much more money, or just dollars to spend, what's the repair cost? I just...
Because that, I mean, he, he is, that money is being raised in capital purchases, so that isn't coming out of reserve. So that, this, this replacement for the heavy rescue is its own capital purchase for 75 grand.
Correct. I just, I'm just not sure of my support for that. I understand that, but in regards to the sale of...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that is the question. It's, it's the replacement of the peers that we just, for next year, that, you know, we just acquired the vehicle, you know, recently, so, anyway.
So what's everybody's thoughts on, I'm sorry, Donnie, go ahead.
Well, I just, some of these vehicles that the past town, town manager got were from Pennsylvania, that they were turning in to get new ones, because they, apparently they cover one of the national forests, so the federal government gives them every so many years, they just buy them all and stuff. And we got some of that. I'm not sure if that's one of them.
It is one of them.
So it wasn't like it was brand new when we got it, I mean...
Right. As Chief Bickett has explained to me, and I think he also said it in our, either the first or the second meeting, Maine, rightly so, because it's a rural state, doesn't follow the NSA standards, which other states do. So they get to their expected life point. Like it or not, it may be perfect for somebody else, but it isn't for us anymore. And that's why we were able to grab those. Fortunately, we don't have to follow those guidelines, because it's expensive. Whether the feds buy them or not, it's still expensive for somebody. Yes?
Can I, Keith, a question?
Yeah, sure.
Keith, do we have, so we have a, we have a mechanic now?
No, we do not.
Okay. So my question to you is, like, who does, like, the maintenance on the vehicles that we have now?
So right now?
Like, for the trucks, for the...
So currently, right now, it's a hodgepodge of individuals, where whoever has time will do it, you know, with experience. We have two individuals at the store department that have mechanical background, both with heavy, you know, heavy trucks.
Yeah.
Obviously, Earl and a couple of his guys have good experience, so right now it's being peaceful together as we have time. You know, there is some neglect in regards to trying to keep up with the weather conditions and top of mechanical issues. It is out to be, out for...
Your advertising, your position.
Sorry. So, you know, we only have one applicant, since it's been out for over a month. Doesn't look promising at this point right now. But to go along, I mean, the biggest thing my comment for that was, is we have a lack of mechanic right now, so I think the weight of that report is as good as it is. We don't, you can't bring him back to say, you know, another review on that.
So do they do, like, the oil changes on the newer vehicles and all that other stuff?
Correct. Brake jobs, oil, suspension.
Did we ever actually think about contracting out that? Only reason why I know that is because the county just did that, and they have an amazing deal that they got with the bids that they got in.
I know the state somewhat does, so I, I don't know for, if there's ever been an option for it.
Who would you contract out to arrange this for all this heavy equipment?
Well, assuming it's the same way with the county, although their, their office is located there, they, their vehicles are all throughout the state, and the person who won that contract was out of Farmington. And they had before done servicing with someone in Strong.
So we're never down off the hill?
We have utilized, in, in the absence of a mechanic right now, we have utilized majority of Sparky's garage to assist us with situations that necessarily we, we don't have the time to do, or the ability at this point. The cost is significant.
Right.
So, I mean...
But we have a lot more newer vehicles on our fleet than we have the older vehicles for...
Well, not necessarily true in the fire department.
For vehicles. No, not for the fire department, not, not for the heavy equipment, but...
In a general, in a general vehicle, yes, we have more, a newer fleet, and our heavy equipment, we do have age, some age to it. I'm not saying, you know, significant, but you know, definitely approaching that 10-year mark. Two of those, the, two of our wheelers, the dump trucks, are issues. They are known to be problematic, so it's...
Because don't there, there's some that travel, because I know, like, I believe some of the logging companies have people that actually would get in a car and travel. They're not necessarily their mechanics, but they're people that they contract out. I don't know if that's something that...
It's definitely an option to look at, and I, aside, I mean, obviously, that might have to review the contract, obviously, in regards to that process of acquisition.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Thank you, Julie, yeah. Okay, fire, fire department reserve, what's your pleasure on $50,000?
Do you want me to make a motion, then we can just see, I mean...
See where it goes.
Yeah, all right, I'll make a motion to reduce the fire department reserve request to $25,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? All in favor of changing $50,000 request to 25? Say a. All opposed? Okay, gonna stay that way. Now Cindy, you moved on down to the airport, was the next one. Did anybody have anything with Public Works Police General prior to?
I actually have one. In regards to the, let's see, hang on one second, on, in regards to the police, I would like to have, see if they would hold on to the cruiser for another year, that, since it only has 76,000 miles on it.
You want to change the $15,000 request?
How will that affect that?
It's, it's been $15,000 every year.
Every year.
To maintain the cost of the vehicle. That just covers, that just covers.
So that would cover the expense under the item of capital spent?
Yes, yes.
So that's further down?
We don't, we don't put the police vehicles in capital purposes. We put it in capital reserve. $15,000 each year covers the rotation.
Right, because he was looking for the vehicle, and then he was looking also for the radios at the same time, for expense.
He actually is not requesting radios. It's just the fire department that's requesting radios this year.
Oh, I thought he had his on the local line.
No, it's just the fire department.
Do you want to change the police?
I would like, honestly, I would like to see the police to, to actually hold on to that vehicle for one more year.
Okay, but again, I understand your point.
Right.
We're talking about the $15,000 here.
No, that, that part, that's fine.
Okay, back down. Anything with, let's see, police general, sewer, sewer reserve, airport reserve, Cindy had?
I have one.
Okay.
On general reserve, that, the general reserve prior to was used for union negotiation last year. And it's my understanding that the $15,000 for this year was to, for a review of salaries, but if you look at the personnel policy, it states that the, any increases have to be approved at town meeting. On that, under Article 21, final dispersments depend upon the outcome of town meeting and will commence July 1st of each year. So I propose that we remove that $15,000 from the general reserve.
Last year with the, with the general reserve, any union negotiations, it covers pay and overtime, because they don't get, the union doesn't get their pay increase or, or whatnot until the negotiation period is done, so, and Donnie, we, we went quite a while over, so they, they had to, they had to grab money from, that's why the reserve was set aside.
They had to back pay it.
They had to back pay them.
Not bad this year, but in years past, it's been way worse.
So where you've had those issues in the past, it would seem to me that that $15,000 being there is a smart move, to have the monies available should you have to...
No, the, the union negotiations were last year.
Understand. Okay, John, you want to chime in on this?
Yeah, Shelley, what you just said is the same thing that I proposed. We put $15,000 in the reserve, so that we can do a wage and salary study, so that we can have ranges for these employees, because what I've seen initially is that a lot of the department has been unpaid. So there's no way to come in at, at this point in time without an extensive study. So by putting it in reserve, it's in the town budget, and the town people get to vote on that until such time as we can have a study done, and then make a presentation to the board for you to act upon. So I'd say that's exactly the same thing as what you just read from the personnel policy. That's how I approached it, to, to put in a reserve, so that we have a means of dealing with it, when we can get the appropriate documentation.
I, I think what's... I, I, I think what, I think what Shelley's talking about is that hasn't been past practice, um, that.
But I think it's allowed, I think it's the same principle. We're, we're asking the townspeople to budget enough money to look at a salary study and then be able to implement it. That's, that's much, no different to me than what you did with the union reserve. Because you could have also completed your work prior to the budget process on the union reserve. You, you know, they have to let you know eighty-eighty days ahead of time if you want to renegotiate. And those things tend to drag on, so, simply with the same thing with the wage study. So I think that's a proper approach. I think if the town voted that money, it would do the same thing as what you read in the, in the personnel policy. So, and then once that's, once that's in place, then any incremental steps based on an annual review in December, I think, is what that says, could, um, be put into a budget in time for the normal budget process in the future. But you have to have that scale, you know, high range, low range for this particular wage, we don't have that.
Well, then you can justify whatever you want to do, you got the figures.
Yes, but we don't have that.
No, but I'm saying, hand on, you will.
Cost of living, and, and that gets disproportionate. So this way, here, you have a real tool to work with down the road.
Oh, yeah.
And based on individual performance as well as cost of living. I mean, you took that full, within a range.
Did we have a motion on that? To take this one out? No, okay. Do you want to? Go ahead.
Um, so, in light of that, I, with the salary survey, we just did that in two thousand and fourteen? Pretty sure it was two thousand and fourteen. I thought a range was made when we set up, like, everyone's job descriptions and stuff like that as well.
I'm not aware of that.
Um, and a lot of people that are, how many are here that have been here for over five years or?
Keith.
Six years?
Keith's the old timer.
Keith, eh, well, that are, that are not, um, union. It's.
All of us, all of us that this impacts would be non-union.
Well, yes, but I'm just saying, like, um, it would be, that, that's what I'm, sorry, that's what I meant. It would be Keith and, um, Earl, right?
Earl, Earl is non-union in public works.
Rich.
And rich.
Mechanic.
And then.
And you.
Everybody in the office here.
Right.
Uh, the police chief, the fire chief.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. And everyone else is union.
Cause everyone, because that, I mean, that's, that's how they started out with the cert, you know, they, that's how they started with the actual start of what the salaries were. Um, what I would, I would love to see is that when you're looking at the, the survey, um, for the salary, I, I think I would want, um, benefits included in everything as one. So to see what they pay, where we pay seventy-five percent of family, um, and to see what everyone else pays. And I want the towns actually in Franklin County, because Franklin County's, um, a different area than, because you were showing me some of the salary of the towns that you were looking at. And it, it actually goes, your pay is basically where you live. Um, and you're not going to get paid in Rangeley, Maine America, the same as you would Portland or Camden or anything like that.
You should do better in Rangeley than you would in, you know, Dallas plantation or some smaller areas.
Right, right, and that's where you're, that's where you're comparing, you're comparing what you have and what the structure is and what the benefits are.
That's just me.
Okay, can I reel you back in?
Yep.
Are we still looking at removing this fifteen? Then I need a motion, see where she goes.
Well, I was, yeah, I make a motion to remove.
Well, if you have more supporting arguments, go ahead.
Well, um, the other thing that I wanted to make a motion for is to, um, to not pay the proposed income protection dental vision at this time to non-union employees until a full review and salary survey is completed with our HR director with other towns in Franklin County, and that's my motion.
So you want to take the, the fifteen thousand off, so we can't do the survey? But then in the next motion, you want to wait on all the benefits until we have a survey done?
I want to make, it's, I'm thinking it's going to take us a lot of time to research, to tell you the honest truth. Because last time, how long did it take us last time for the research for it?
Took it a little while.
I know, but you just contradicted yourself. You said that you didn't want to do the survey, you don't want to fund that money so we could do a survey.
I'm saying do the survey so we're ready for next year, so we can make sure that our budget is right in line, is what I'm saying. Is what I'm saying. Cause I think we're going to need that time in order to get there. I don't think we're there right now to be able to vote for it, for this year's budget, is what I'm saying.
All right, just for a point of clarification, Dave, Dave is suggesting that if you take out in this general reserve the fifteen thousand dollars to do this study, that you, and I think everybody agrees, is necessary to get done so that we can justify all of the other things. Um, we won't be able to do it, or there's no money for it.
Right, but how, how do you know it's not going to be more than fifteen thousand, is what I'm saying?
It's not for the survey, those are for wages.
That was the implement recommendation.
That's for wages.
Ina Lee and I will do the survey.
Yeah, right.
That's not for the survey.
We're already contracted.
The fifteen thousand is for wages, and, and I think what Shelley was trying to point out is the, that in prior budgets, the updated wages were fully disclosed to the, you know, to the voters at the time. Um, you know, when, you know, the only time that they're not disclosed is just during that, every third year when we're bargaining with the union. So the fifteen thousand was just to tuck away for raises. On, and that's the raises on top of the two-point-eight percent on COLA.
All right. I think you'll agree that this, uh, discussion that she just brought up revolving around the increases is not in this fifteen thousand dollar line.
The, the benefits we'll tackle later, I guess.
That's what I'm getting at.
The fifteen thousand was for wages.
Correct, so again, trying to reel it back in, Cindy, so fifteen thousand dollars in public, in general reserve is what his recommendation is for, money's available for raises and such. Do you want to leave that in there, or do you try to take it out?
I'm trying to take it out.
All right, so then let's forget the other part of it, and let's stay with this line.
All right.
And make your motion based on that, and we'll see where she flies.
All right, I make a motion to remove the fifteen thousand dollars to be spent for, um, out of the, in the general reserve.
Yeah, never mind what it's spent for, just take it out of general reserve, if that's what you want.
Remove it out of general reserve.
Okay, need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on that fifteen thousand dollar? All in favor of taking fifteen thousand dollars? Opposed? Okay. Um, general reserve, sewer technology reserve, sewer reserve, airport reserve, Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'm just, I'm just suggesting that, um, that we move the, or that we have a warrant article, um, that, uh, asks for the voters to move forty thousand out of the airport reserve that was raised in the prior two, uh, budget years and, you know, move that to whatever reserve the board.
Downtown revitalization plan, or?
Sure.
Or the economic reserve.
Economic reserve.
I mean, we can divide it, you know, we can put fifteen in the economic reserve and, and, you know, the other twenty-five in, in another one.
And that, I mean, is that, is that, um?
Would that be two separate questions, two separate warrant articles?
Yeah, I guess, my only question would be, do we have any issues with FAA as far as having raised that in the past?
No.
I know we got a lot of money coming in because of the.
Right, and that's, that's the thought.
Almost five hundred to six hundred thousand.
Yeah, but that's not for any of that.
Let's hope so.
What we already raised, is that part of a budget that we committed already?
Let's hear from the airport manager.
Uh, that money was put in there for, um, the AWAS system, um, by Estela, I'll tell you that. They no longer make this product, so it's like twenty-five thousand, thirty thou, actually, I think it's thirty-five thousand now to replace it and for major repairs. We have some major projects coming up, and I am strongly against moving any money, even though we're getting other money in. We have the apron project coming in, um, we're looking at, uh, teahanger development. I just think that money, I mean, we have a CIP, we have plans for projects coming up over the next five years. So I'm not sure why the airport would be one that you would remove it from when there are other reserves that don't have huge projects on our CIP.
It's, well, that's, that's what I'm trying to pull, is money from, from other reserves. And last year, the twenty-five thousand dollars was earmarked for the full parallel taxiway, and we removed that and just left it generic. So that twenty-five thousand isn't earmarked for anything.
This year, we pulled out any requests because of the money that's.
Right. I just think if you're looking back down through this, um, these rever, these reserve account requests are up a hundred and seventy thousand from last year. So I'm just really trying to put some thought into what we don't have to raise. I mean, a hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase from last year and almost a two hundred thousand dollar increase from two years ago. I mean, come on.
I understand that, Cindy, but come on, when you get, when you, um, everybody's got to realize, the town is here forever. The town is always going to need plow equipment, it's always going to need fire equipment, it's always going to need things that are perpetual forever, we don't change. This is what we do.
Yeah.
And these things cost a lot of money, so if you don't plan ahead. And you're going to pay now or pay later.
Well, I think it's our job to ask questions.
Absolutely.
And to, to demand explanations, and if there's a way for us to save taxpayer money. I think, then if we need to leave the fifteen thousand, maybe that's already been spent, or, but the twenty-five thousand dollars from last year was just a general, I mean, like I said, it was, it was initially earmarked for the parallel taxiway, um, but then it, you know, that, that project didn't exist at the time?
Uh, we do still have a pending application on that.
Yeah, for a hundred percent financing, yeah, so.
No, I agree with you, it's, um, you know, it's that twenty-five thousand isn't going to kill the airport, no question about it.
Mm-hmm.
Especially with the money coming.
Right.
Yes, sir.
I just, I mean, granted, we're getting on paper, one million and some change, but that's not for any of this stuff. That's to build the runway. I mean, that's not down the road money.
No, no, we're talking the extra money.
We can't even use it for stuff.
But I'm talking the five hundred thousand from us selling the gravel.
The stumpage.
What my thing is, you know, uh, uh, we can't use the, the runway money to do something else.
Right.
Um, and if something else needs done, you've got the money. I just, I just don't like putting stuff in places and then moving it somewhere else, it just, it usually doesn't work out well.
Go ahead.
All right, so she was tucking forty thousand. We just came up with forty-five thousand, take that twenty-five thousand from the airport reserve and take out the twenty thousand from solid waste.
From where?
Solid waste.
Solid waste.
So that gives you forty-five thousand dollars.
Good with that?
Now, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions now, because we're tinkering around with your potential scales. We're tinkering around with buildings that you need repairing, and different compactors and generators. I mean, are we, are we good with that? Do you have enough in those?
I think you're, I think you're in the same position as you are in another line that you're going to look at. I mean, why complete one line, put another one when you have facilities that all need work? I mean, we're going to stay here and re, pass these.
Five in line, it costs what it costs to run this town, and that's just the end of it. I mean, we're not out here building the Taj Mahal or anything.
We're all passionate about this, I understand, I just want to make sure, Shelley?
Um, I just think that the concept with the twenty-five thousand that we raised for the parallel taxiway, we're going to get some cash, which we weren't anticipating, that's going to end up going into that reserve for future projects. Even though that actual money is actually coming from your area, because it's on technically the, um, town's property, and it only can be used for the airport. So all, I think Cindy's saying, correct me, excuse me if I'm wrong, is taking that twenty-five thousand dollars out, putting it into another area where that your account is going to be by the end of next year at close to what, three hundred thousand dollars?
Okay, one of the things you said is incorrect.
Okay.
The stuff that's coming off Chick Hill right this minute is going to the airport and being built as such in the future, and go anywhere. We've already talked about it going in Loon Lake Road. We've al, no?
No, only above and beyond, um, no, I, I, they've, they've calculated five hundred thou, to five to six hundred thousand.
No, 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 it's not what I'm saying, and that's not what she said. Let me start again. We calculated the five hundred thousand dollars, we know what's coming in for the airport. When the airport is all paved and done, all the machinery goes away, there's more to be had. It can be ground and be used again, it doesn't necessarily go to the airport then, it goes to whatever we do.
So you're saying we're not going to get any stumpage from?
No. Try, help me out.
Money from the airport.
Yeah, we may, I mean, we signed that agreement with, uh.
Cause they've gone past what the original contracts were.
Not yet, but they, they intend to, there'll be more bill available that would be above and beyond the.
Correct.
The first six hundred thousand that we know is going to go into the airport reserve.
So then that money will go into the airport reserve?
Could go into anything, other projects.
Other projects.
Not the airport reserve.
You don't have, so you're saying not, that it does not have to go into the airport after they've gone over their dollar mark? Is that what you're saying?
Let's all, let's make sure that we're all doing it right here, so I can understand.
If the initial five percent share the town was to have on the project is about five hundred seventy thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And they agreed by funding that a hundred percent, that that money will still be paid to us to go into the airport reserve fund. That ends that whole five percent initial deal. Anything above that, the town earns any money selling more gravel can be used for Loon Lake Road or, or the taxi project if that comes up, or any other project the town has. That's, that's what we're looking at.
It's our gravel.
Well, that's our gravel, and we work out a similar deal with the contractor to have him buy it from us. And that would help with coming up with our local share of any grant or anything like that, to help us complete the project.
And that's where Shane contracts, so if somebody decides they want to use those materials for Loon Lake Road, they can do that.
To negotiate the project.
So at the end of the whole runway extension is money from, going to be paid to the town of Rangeley and put in the reserve for just that runway project?
Just the initial five hundred and seventy thousand from the initial five percent obligation we have. That goes all into the airport reserve to be used for future airport projects. Anything else is the town's use for other town projects.
Clear as mud? Can I make a motion? Yep, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to take twenty-five thousand out of the airport reserve and put it into the economic development reserve.
The economic reserve?
Yeah.
You want to go one of the?
So fifteen, fifteen of that would go into the economic reserve, Dave?
The bottom, doesn't it? Development one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or if you go into the downtown revitalization, do we ask for fifty on that? So it could go into either one of them.
Or split it.
Your motion, what's your pleasure?
Put it on the downtown revitalization, because we asked, they are asking for fifty, they'll cut that down to twenty-five. That's easy, it's one transfer.
But then if they vote, so?
Hold on. You're saying in your motion to? Is that?
My motion is to move twenty-five thousand from the airport reserve to the downtown revitalization reserve. If that gets voted down, it'll be voted down by twenty-five, not by fifty.
Second.
Is that what you're asking?
Well, I want to make sure that I understand, you're asking to reduce their request, that they're requesting a fifty thousand.
To twenty-five.
To twenty-five, and add another twenty-five to it, bring them back to fifty.
Correct.
We all understanding that?
Mm-hmm. Leave it at fifty then.
I need a second.
Second.
Any more discussion?
I think you have questions.
Just to make clar, clarify for her.
Well, I actually think I understand the answer, the clarification is that some, they, the public could vote against moving any money out of the airport.
What it's going to look like is.
Which would then mean that.
What it's going to look like is, it's going to be fifty thousand there. The vehicle by which you get the fifty thousand in there is twenty-five is going to be coming out of the airport reserve, which is an accounting function of hers, and goes into here. Is that correct, John?
Can we, can I recommend two motions? I mean, one, one is a separate motion completely from this, and that's simply to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the airport reserve fund to the, what, economic reserve?
Downtown.
Downtown revitalization.
Downtown revitalization reserve, okay? And then, um, as part of this action. And then as part of this action, you want to move to remove $25,000 from the downtown revitalization.
Request.
Leaving it at 50.
So if, yeah.
No, leaving it at 25.
Leaving it at 25. You got to.
We're going to do an accounting procedure, putting 25 into that.
So what you're doing is you are going to remove 25,000 of the 50,000 request and then ask the town to transfer money from the airport reserve to the downtown revitalization. So that may or may not happen.
Right.
But that's the risk. We're only asking the town to raise 25 out of the 50.
Right.
You're also asking the town to transfer.
And to transfer.
And then do you have another, a separate article on that?
All right. Here's where we'll go. We'll go to you next, but just make sure you understand it's still 50 grand in there.
I understand.
Okay, go ahead.
My concern is that some, I'm going to play devil's advocate, that someone's going to go to vote and say, well, I don't want to take any money out of the airport, so I'm going to take that down. But really, they would have wanted 50,000 to go to economic development and they can't change the 25 back to 50.
I know. That's why I missed our meetings. Go ahead, Rebecca.
All right, so we've done this before. I I'll have to find the exact wording. I think the attorney did the wording. It was two articles. First one was to transfer a certain amount and appropriate the the rest. That was one article. Then it says if this article fails, the second article would be you appropriate the 50,000. So it was two articles. If the first one passes, you don't vote the second one. If the first one fails, you vote the second one. And we have all the wordings from the prior years.
We did that with the waste management.
Along with an asterisk.
Okay.
Yes.
Comments?
Nope.
Shelley?
I just think it's a better option because most people are willing to transfer money from one account or not because it doesn't cost me anything.
Right.
And then they only have to raise 25,000 taxes versus 50,000 taxes. So hopefully that's the.
Okay, so we didn't get a second on Dave's motion, correct?
Yes, we got two.
We got two, one from Cindy, one from Dawn.
You guys want to pull them back and do it right? Because John is suggesting something different.
No, his motion is to take 25,000 out of the airport reserve and put it into downtown revitalization reserve. That's number one.
You want to leave?
So let's vote on that.
All in favor?
There'll be a part two.
All in favor? Voted. Second motion should be to structure your warrant article to say 25,000 has been moved to the economic development downtown revitalization committee.
From the airport.
From the airport.
And appropriate.
And appropriate 25,000.
To make 50.
And should the pass, should the article not pass, then it goes up to 50. Need a second? All in favor?
I think.
Thank you.
And then the whole downtown revitalization line comes out of the reserve account. There's nothing in there. You've got it covered under.
And it's a separate.
The other article. There's a separate article on airport, separate article on downtown revitalization and then it doesn't even get included in this article.
Okay, I think people will realize they don't have to raise 25,000 when they read it.
Let's hope so.
And you're going to back, piggyback on this.
So you guys know what you need to write.
Yeah, we still need.
Okay, so you're all set now? I'm going to just keep skipping along here because we've only got a few minutes. Airport reserve, we've got through that. Anything on cemetery? Economic? Downtown, that's done. Solid waste? Town park reserve? Now, do we need a motion? We've done these individually. That should suffice this Article C1.
Well, the recommendation right now says 380, so whatever the map shows, change to 380 and then vote. It shows what your vote is on the total article because that's what people are voting on, that total amount.
What I'm asking is, do you need a recommendation, an a motion from us to move the total?
Yes.
So what's, give me the total.
355.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I wanted to.
That's all that's been moved is 25 out of the economic development, downtown rather. So the recommendation would be 355. And then vote on that.
I'll make a motion to revise Article C1 that the board of selectmen recommends 355,000.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So moved. Thank you. C2. Anything there? C3. Anything there? 4. 5. 6. I'm sorry?
Hold on a sec.
Yep, yep. While Cindy's looking, you want to just keep going on this before we start the selectmen's reading or?
We have to finish this.
Yeah, or second choi, or second choice is we finish this after our meeting?
Just keep going.
Let's keep going.
Keep going.
Good. C6, you had something?
Well, I think it's this one that we have to vote on. We didn't vote for some reason on the.
Rat Van.
Rat Van?
Which one?
C7.
C7.
No, you guys.
Yeah, here it is.
Oh, the, okay, thank you.
And they sent.
So, so. So the Rat Van's good?
Rebecca has a question.
Expense budget articles. I'm sorry.
Okay, so there were changes in C5. I gave you guys notes.
Changes need to be voted on?
C5, then tennis courts changed. Um. So let's see here. This is for capital. Okay, so for, actually, let's go back to the capital equipment. The wing setup grader, to get used, it's 15,000 for a brand new one, 25,000 or vote, vote it all down completely, but you guys are going to do one of the three. So either add 15,000 to the 56, 600, 25,000 or.
Okay, where are you again?
C3.
C3.
But where are you, where's your information?
Right here on this page.
It is on your capital purchases.
Changes need to be voted on?
Yeah.
Yep.
Or if you're looking for color print, it's on there too.
That's the last paragraph here on that particular one, on the wing for the grader. So apparently the budget committee didn't support either one. They stay at 56, 6, but if you wanted to support either a used wing, you'd have to add 15 or a new wing, you'd have to add 25. That's the question.
So if you do a used, it'd be 71,600. If you do the brand new, it would go to 81,600.
And the wing would be used mostly for pushing back snowbanks before the next storm, so there's a place to push the snow and.
Or worst case scenario, you could also have as a backup if a truck.
A backup or a broken down truck when you need it.
Okay, you want to add 15 or add 25 or leave it as is? Talk to me.
What kind of shape do we, is the, a used one going to be in?
I haven't found one yet.
You haven't found one, so.
I just, that's, that's an estimate that I got through H.B. Fairfield and through.
That's okay.
Another company, so.
But a new one is, is 25?
Correct, that's the whole setup. That's the wing, the tower, hydraulics.
All the cable and everything, yep.
And I will tell you, as the budget committee requested or made a point, is M&amp;H is 110 dollars an hour.
Yeah, their rationale says the wing setup for grader is not an essential item. It can be rented for the once a year it was proposed to be used. That's what the budget committee said.
And obviously the winter, a, a, a winter would dictate the number of times of, of use.
Yeah.
And obviously, is a cost and effect to the trucks as you push back banks with those trucks, the limitation to help artists approach them. And then obviously, as the winter season changes, obviously the furnace with those banks dictate some of that abuse on that truck. I would have dollars and cents figures on whatever.
Have we, have we ever tried renting the, a wing?
Have not. We've actually in the past, what we do is hook up an oversized wing that we have that isn't a correct way to do that and push the truck beyond what it's probably meant to do.
How many hours do you think it would take for them to do it?
I, I, probably an eight hour day, you could probably accomplish quite a bit. I don't have an answer. Again, you could accomplish it quite a bit in an eight hour day, but the winter's going to dictate how many times you have to utilize that contractor and their availability at and on somewhere else. I understand that 15,000 or 25,000 is a lot of money.
Did they have to put the big wing on this year?
Don't believe they did.
I think we've seen it this year.
I think we were able to, uh, between the loader and sergeant, in my case, on the road up there, this is quite a, quite an asset in pushing back certain areas that are known issues.
It's not pertaining to this per se, but it is, and that is, I would just encourage the selectmen, I would love to see, you kick around all these numbers, but I think a lot of people, we need to see how it impacts everything overall, the total. I mean, it's going to change the tax rate by this and by this and by this, you know, because just numbers really are numbers. They're not, there's no context to them. And so a person coming in, you know, we're asking to vote on this and if we don't know, well, yeah, it sounds good. Any one item in its own standalone piece may sound good, but when you total up everything that you do, all of a sudden, oh, wow, that's a big number, you know, that, that has a big impact on the bottom line. So I just encourage that type of information to be there. Maybe it is. I just think that's necessary for people to make an informed decision on that, so.
Thank you. Yes.
You could try hiring it out for one year and then you'd have some information to look at how many hours it took to make a pass on all the roads in town and see while the grader was doing that, the town trucks wouldn't have to be doing it. So, you know, it would probably, you could probably hire it with a standard snow removal budget and then, you know, if it's real expensive, you know, you may want to buy your own, but if it's cheaper than you can do it yourselves. Hire it now.
Thank you. Okay, what's your, what's your feeling?
I think we should hold off on the wing.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Anybody have a burning eye, do anything else? All right. Next, where'd Rebecca go?
She's going to be getting.
She's all done?
Yeah.
She should be back. It should be just a quick meeting.
A few minutes planning board.
Okay.
Keep going.
So we're speaking the same amount, so we've already.
Believe it, it's just like it is.
We're leaving it as is.
It's as it is. No more increases, no more reductions. Now, I know I was going quick. I'm assuming, I've got notes, I know you've got scats of them, both of you, and I see notes on yours. So if you see something coming, please, let's get it done when I get there. So we're back to C3, 4. We good?
Where's the one with the basketball tennis court?
Um, C3.
Yeah.
Are we, is there a removal of 6,000 for the snowmobile? Is that correct, Kate?
Budget Committee.
It's an option we have, we have to discuss. We kind of skipped over it too fast, so I thought Rebecca was going to interrupt us.
That's also back on C3.
Okay.
Budget Committee, vote to remove 6,000 for snowmobile.
In our packets tonight, we have a solution for the snowmobile issue, which we can deal with at the selectmen's meeting. Isn't that a fair statement?
Yeah.
So, again, C3 is going to be left if, if we're in agreement, at 56,000.
56,000.
Oh, okay.
But is that, but is that the 6,000 to be removed from that for the, that, so that's what Tricia was asking us, sorry.
Thank you, right, Shelley. Budget Committee, remove 6,000. So I think if we remove 6,000, we can still deal with it, with what's in the reserve fund today.
Okay.
Yep.
Until the selectmen's meeting.
Take it back.
Yeah, you're right. Could be 50,600.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to revise Article C3 that the selectmen recommend 50,600.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
5.
Yes, make sure I hear, please.
Changes to C5. If you look at your colored sheets, it's actually shown in the town manager's request, 64,520. The differences, and Keith can speak to it, is the tennis courts, we have more specific numbers. For the Rangelley court, it's 13,900. This is not just tennis courts, I apologize, it's basketball as well. So if a Rangelley is 13,900, aquatic, 12,795. We're still waiting on a quote, but that increases it to 64,520. The budget committee did not vote for the increases. They said keep the 20,000 request and take the rest from reserve.
Ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I could go with the budget committee's recommendation.
Set a motion?
Sure. Yes, I'll make a motion, but I don't have the figure, I guess.
Right.
Budget Committee's recommendation vote was, it's still 54,7, correct?
54,750.
Okay, so there'd be no motion to change anything then? Okay.
Yes?
A little clarification, are you then saying that you're not going to upgrade the tennis courts and basketball courts or are you just getting?
Well, we're getting to the discussion part. Yes, absolutely. That's, that's a good question. We have a motion? Did you second it? Seconded?
I don't think we need a motion. There's no change, so there's no need to make a motion, but they've got revised figures, so the difference will come out of reserve for the, for the improvements to the tennis and basketball courts.
So that will be improved.
Yes.
It doesn't.
We're not going to raise it.
That's not right, is it? You got, we've got, we've got a.
Well, we, that would come under Town Park Reserve. We had, I don't think we have more than 2,000 in there. We requested 50.
Correct.
To make up for all the playground equipment that we weren't able to fund because of the overruns on the project. So we're requesting 50 for playground equipment and I think that's, there's not much more in the reserve fund.[1672.12]
So could we include with the grant that, that Daryl's looking at, could we include those repairs with that? And then the fifty thousand would be our, our monies toward that?
Toward any park issue.
There's three problems with that. One, this could get voted down, you lose the fifty. Two, you don't get the grant, you lose whatever that is. So the question is, do we secure playground equipment this year with something positive, or do we, say, take our chances?
The playground equipment is being raised in the Town Park Reserve this year for fifty thousand.
Right.
I just, just said that, and there's a, there is a potential no vote there that you have to think about.
They all are a potential.
So we're going to raise fifty thousand for the park, and then we're going to take and try and appropriate ten out of that into this. I'd make a motion to.
We have, we're moving seconded on this year to go with.
We haven't, you guys haven't made a motion?
There's no motion.
There's no motion.
That's right, that's right.
I'm making a motion.
All right, sorry, Dave, calm down.
Doing five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars for the infrastructure, which includes all of these things.
What's the number again?
Sixty-four, five, twenty.
Moved?
Where?
We have a motion?
Second.
Oh, sixty-four, I thought you said fifty-four.
Sixty-four. That's the number I needed, right? Five-four, five-twenty, that's the real number, sixty-four, five-twenty.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Article six, C six. Anything? C seven, right there. Expense budget articles. Selectmen Legislative Request seventy-four, nine oh seven, anything there? Yes?
I'd like a motion to not pay proposed income protection dental vision at this time for non-union employees until a full review and salary survey is completed with our HR director with other local towns in Franklin County. Second.
Moved, seconded, Shelley and Cindy? John?
Yeah, just want to point out that.
Moved and seconded.
I just want to point out that the union health insurance has a hundred percent dental and vision covered within their policy. And that's why I'm presenting that. The income protection, that's just another, it's broken down that the employees can pay for either forty percent, fifty-five, I believe, and seventy. And I know towns I've been involved with have offered the first forty percent, and then the employees can pay for up to seventy percent. And that's what I've proposed here, is the lower level forty percent the town pays, employee pays the balance. So, the reason for that is, everything I've proposed are benefits that are run through the main municipal association for all municipalities, and most towns I'm familiar with have some version of these, you know, mix of benefits for their employees, so that's why those are in there. But the dental and the vision, mainly because we are paying full cost of that through the, the union, for the union workers.
Doesn't that affect the union negotiation part as well? And at the same time, we're paying family where other organizations aren't paying family. So I'm just saying, like, I, I would like the survey to first see exactly, like, I want a complete thing of, like, what towns are offering, if they're doing family or just the individual, what their coverages are, if they are paying income protection, if they're paying, what they're paying towards dental, what they're paying, because insurances keep going up. And I know that we're looking at the, we're looking at COLA, and that's being at two point eight, but I, with those increases, and you already expressed where you don't think the economy is right where it needs to be quite yet, I agree. So, I, I just don't know if there's a lot of employees that are able to increase their employees' wages by that much in addition to paying family percentages of family benefits along with that as well. So that's, that's all I'm asking for, and a little bit of time to do the research for it before we decide to go forward.
And Shelley, my whole action is based on trying to bring non-union employees and union employees closer together with the quality and the benefits the towns provide. All the employees should be, you know, treated very similarly in those kind of benefits. And there are other benefits union employees get, they get longevity, for instance, and those kind of things, which the regular employees don't get. So, yeah, I'm just trying to bring them closer together for more uniformity.
And I understand that, but I just want to have a complete playing ball field where we know exactly what everybody has.
Cindy?
I, I don't know, Tracy, if you had a chance to forward my question to Annalee about the HRA accounts?
I didn't get your email. Sometimes that happens, there's, sometimes I think there's a letter left off of my address depending on where you email it from.
Okay.
I did not see any mail from.
Okay, because what I had, what, what the non-union employees have is an HRA account that the town replenishes every year. And so my question was, you know, does, does this account allow for reimbursement for dental, for vision, for, and if, and if not, is it a poor product? Because, what's that?
I've had an H R A, and you can use it for dental.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Please, we've got a lot of discussions going to be had up here. Go ahead, Neil.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think it's just health.
Our HRA accounts will reimburse for any approved medical out-of-pocket, so even if, if I, so I don't carry the dental insurance, if I were to go have my teeth cleaned and I submitted a receipt, they would, they would replenish me that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's all medical, approved medical expenses.
So I guess that's my point, is that, you know, so here we have a benefit that's being provided, you know, at, you know, we replenish this account every year, that the non-union employees, I'm sorry, that the union employees don't have. And I just think, and in the past, I told John and Tracy that, in the past, we've had a full discussion with Annalee regarding benefits, okay, this is, this is what's going on, this is what I recommend, and that didn't happen this year. So, I agree with Shelley, why rush into this if we've got, you have an HRA account that reimburses, I don't think anyone, from what I can see, and I, you know, granted, there's a lot to look at, it doesn't look like it gets depleted.
No, it doesn't, but, but you only have to replace what's been used. So my example to, I believe, was to Shelley, so far I've had like three copays for prescriptions, total in less than a hundred dollars. Way less, so if that's all I utilize out of the HRA money the town provided, you only have to make up that amount that I actually use. So that, that's the real savings to the town on what you've already saved by lowering the health plan that you offer to the employees. You get double savings, and that's the biggest part of it.
Okay, Donnie?
I mean, we're talking about, how much money are we talking about here? Not a lot.
It's, it's a matter of going forward and taking union negotiations, it's like, is this one more thing that is going to come out of taxpayer pockets?
Yep.
And if, and again, this is something that we typically, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, we understand what we're voting on, because it almost sounds like there, there's a potential for a dual benefit here with reimbursement from an account that the, that the, that the taxpayers replenish versus an insurance as well. So, yeah, I, I didn't realize you didn't get my email, but that was my question for Annalee.
Rebecca?
Forgive my ignorance, but you're talking about Annalee recommending this, didn't she recommend we switch over to this insurance?
This is a recommendation from.
Okay, that's, okay.
She recommended we drop from Plan A to Plan PPO five hundred.
But I was talking about the dental and all that, didn't she recommend us doing the eighty-twenty and?
No.
Fifty-eighty-twenty, but the dental and the vision is included in what the unions have. But she recommended the eighty-twenty split because that's what the unions have in their contract.
Okay, Shelley?
So, yeah, the other thing that I would like, when they are doing the survey, is to actually do the HRA versus and health savings account. Because the health savings account is something that you can bank, it's like a checking account, and you can use it just for all medical. So, I just, I, I would like to actually see the way out, because that might benefit more for the employees than actually what we're having now. So, I just, let's, I just want to say, I just want to see a complete look at it, and I know it's going to take time, because we had, I think, we had tons of executive sessions to.
Sure. Yeah, I guess, so where, where was the Board of Selectmen involved with this discussion with Annalee?
You were.
Obviously. We wouldn't be sitting here with questions, and I.
And that's why we're discussing it now, when I prepared my budget to present to you, it is my budget after all it comes to you.
I, I'm just speaking personally, I don't like it, okay, I don't like surprises at budget. This, we're looking at a huge increase this year, and here's just one more thing that I, I'm, I'm just not very happy about that. So, everything has always been disclosed ahead of time previously, she has been invited here to discuss and explain, so we can defend it to the taxpayers, and I can't do that.
Anything else? Okay, here we are, tell me what the, what's.
Motion in a second.
You have a motion in a second, could you read that back to me, please?
I didn't get it all, I was waiting to watch the tape.
Okay.
She's got it written down, so I hope she can repeat it, maybe I'll get it.
Motion to not pay proposed income protection dental and vision at this time to non-union employees until a full review and salary survey is completed with our HR director with other local towns in Franklin County.
Cindy seconded that. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of that motion? All opposed? Next. So you started right at legislative, correct, Shelley? Administration, under administration?
Yeah, but there's a bunch of changes here that are changes with benefits, and I don't know what the dollar amounts are that we have to change, is that correct?
Are there any changes in, in any of these lines here? I didn't see any, so.
Finance, and I can tell you the amount. They're right there, so finance will need to be changed from two hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eight dollars to two, two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, so it's a reduction. That's EX four.
Two forty-two, seven thirty-two.
Two forty-two, seven thirty-two, that is correct.
Give me the other changes right down through here till we get to the bottom line, so we can move to the bottom line.
The next one would be, hold on a second. The next one would be in the fire. Actually, no, I lied to you, I'm sorry. What, the number I just gave you was for fire rescue. Thank you.
Yeah, because I told you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so that was fire rescue, the number I just gave, the two forty-two, seven thirty-two.
But we're on.
It's not in here.
We're on Article C seven, is there any?
We're actually on EX, Article EX four, finance. Because the expense budget articles, A through I, are all broken down underneath it into separate articles.
Okay.
All right, so finance will need to be changed to one hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars, that is also a reduction.
Give me the number again, please.
One sixty-six, one eighty-six.
Planning is the same?
Everything else is the same.
So we reduce to ninety thousand, nine hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and fifty to?
Well, you would reduce EX four to one sixty-six, one eighty-six.
We need a new total for C seven.
Say that again, Cindy?
We need a new total for C seven if that matters.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I thought you were.
Seven thirty-six, three, four.
No, no, that can't be right.
It's not C seven, it's right here. I'm sorry, yeah.
Expense budget articles is a total at the bottom of nine hundred and two thousand.
I'm sorry, I did that wrong.
Right, and what I'm asking is, I want to change that number to the accurate number reflecting the change of one sixty-eight, four eighty-one to one sixty-six, one eighty-six. Yep. And then we'll start on EX one.
It'll be nine hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Nine oh two, seventy-five?
Nine zero zero, two seventy-five.
Thank you. Nine oh two oh.
It doesn't make sense.
Seventy-five. It's going down. See that? From one sixty-six, four eighty-one, excuse me, one sixty-eight.
That's almost a grand difference, right?
Yeah, hang on.
It's two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars difference. Is it two oh one?
Oh, one.
Nine zero zero, two seventy-five.
That's better. Okay, nine zero zero, two seventy-five, that makes sense. EX one, see if the voters at town rangers raise appropriate seventy-four thousand, nine oh seven for legislation, Selectmen Legislative. Any changes there? One, this is the one we're talking about. Okay, two. Appropriate hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine eighty-eight, we all set there? Three, assessors, seventy-six, one eighty-eight. Four, needs to be changed, Selectmen Recommendation of one sixty-six, one eighty-six. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend one hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars for Article EX four.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? So move. EX five, one forty-one, eight twenty-six. Anything? Six. Thirty-eight, one twenty-one, buildings, Town Hall. Seven. Eight. Eighty-two thousand. Town Clerk. Nine. Forty-seven, six twenty-four, all set there? Okay, is there any changes to fire, rescue, police department, animal control, EMS changes? Just tell me.
Fire rescue was the one that went down to the two forty-two, seven thirty-two.
Fire and rescue is what again?
It's going to go down to two hundred forty-two dollars and seventy, sorry.
Really?
Whoa, they're forty-two dollars, we're. Bacon just drowned in the water.
Two hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, which is a difference.
Two forty-two. Okay, EX ten, got that changed, two forty-two, seven thirty-two, motion please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to revise Article EX ten that the Selectmen recommend two hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Police Department, three hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Any discussion? Animal Control, five thousand sixty-six. Any discussion? EMS, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. That is the best deal in town. Fire hydrants, that is the worst.
Not the best deal.
One hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty. Any discussion there? Changes? Okay. Okay, changes on any of these numbers? We all set there?
Total, on that I got seven fifty-eight, six twenty-four, instead of seven seventy-one, four hundred. So it's a reduction of twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six.
Where?
Wait a minute, where are you?
On, on the total. So you have the total of Public Safety, seven seventy-one, on page six across.
With the fire department reduction.
Oh, there it is.
That's total number.
So your totals, tell me the total again, please.
Total, seven fifty-eight, six twenty-four.
Thank you. We reflected that vote for the change of the total, okay? Highway Sanitaries through a solidways, airport, park, and recreation cemeteries, public service director for a total of two million, seventy-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-four. That total isn't changed, correct?
Right.
Okay, EX fifteen, seven hundred forty-three, two sixty-three for highways, any discussion? Motion please, oh, no motion, excuse me. EX sixteen, five twenty-five, oh two oh. Article seventeen, EX seventeen. Article seventeen, EX seventeen. Three eighty-eight, eight fifty-five. We good there?
Three eighty-eight or three eighty-six?
I'm sorry?
It says three eighty-six here.
Okay, I'm sorry I said that incorrectly, three eighty-six, eight fifty-five. Eighteen. Four, forty-three thousand two hundred and twelve. Nineteen. Two twenty-eight, four, two hundred, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars for parks and rec. Anything? Twenty? Cemeteries, thirty-seven thousand eight oh three. Hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and three for public service director. Anything? And facilities maintenance, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety. Anything? EX twenty-three. For culture. Nineteen thousand from the selectmen, nineteen thousand fifty dollars. And from the budget committee, we have nine thousand fifty dollars. We want to change anything from the selectmen's recommendation? Anybody? EX twenty-four. General assistance, two thousand dollars agreed upon by both committees, any changes? We are not gonna have Article EX twenty-five in there, it doesn't make any sense because there's nothing that can be done, yea or nay? Just gonna pay, we're gonna pull it off.
The town doesn't need to vote on that, that's our assessment, all we do is collect the tax for the county, so it's not our vote.
Lucky it's not.
But they'll have that information in the town report.
Their budget's less than ours.
Right, I'm sorry.
Their budget is less than ours.
Whose budget?
The county's.
The what?
The county's.
County's budget, oh. Are you suggesting we leave it in? And give a perceived number, because we don't want to have the real number until later.
No, yeah, because they haven't started yet.
Good. Nothing for us to do on the donation articles?
Well, we did give you a thing about the no recommendation.
Hmm, yeah.
That we got a legal opinion on.
Yeah.
And it is, it looks like it is actually a form of a recommendation. No recommendation, so that, that is your vote.
Says no recommendation, how can it be a form of recommendation if the
But you voted to say no recommendation, so
I would tell you why that is. Years ago, we decided that this stuff is not essential for one of the town. So we'd get in a big brouhaha, we stopped recommending some of these and not other ones. So I'm not sure you want to go there at all.
The only reason we're talking about it, because it came up at the public hearing, I don't think you were there, but one solution that may you know, Tricia suggested is keep no recommendation, but put by a vote of five to nothing, selectmen, five to nothing, budget committee.
Do you have to even put it?
Then at least you know, they know you're voting that there's no recommendation. I think the concern was you were voting no, recommending no money. But it's, I mean, it can be read. That way, all the way that you're leaving it up to the town to decide.
Well, nobody's ever taken that, because they always put the money here, so.
Well, I don't know what the, you know, what we should do, but it's certainly something to look at as to what their opinion is.
Or how about instead of no recommendation, no opinion?
Well, the reason I think we need to stay is no recommendation is because there is differences of opinion on the board as to whether or not, A, it's essential for the town. And B, whether or not the board of selectmen should weigh in on these things and oversee it. And I think they should weigh in and oversee it and have a process of due diligence. And therefore, at the end of the day, after we've listened to the presentations, even though they may seem redundant year after year, you have at least had an opportunity to allow the public to come and listen to those. So us rendering no opinion means that we're still going to allow them to be part of our process, but we're just not going to tell the townspeople what they should be doing on this. That's why I'm recommending you continue on with no recommendation.
Or no opinion.
Go ahead, Tricia.
The MMA legal opinion stated that no recommendation is good, but we might want to just make it clear that the boards did vote on it. So that's why I had talked to John about just saying, selectmen, no recommendation, vote five to nothing. So then they see that you voted that way. Because you did, as a board, vote that way, and so did the budget committee. They just want to make it clear that way. That's what the MMA legal opinion is, it's all on there.
I don't have a problem putting that in there.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I, I think the nonprofit
Thank you, Cindy, thank you.
I have my hand up a lot. I, I almost think the nonprofits would see that as something worse, because it was, it was
Thank you.
It was the, because at the public hearing, they, you know, they they thought that it was just a negative message that we even had to put a recommendation, is my right, Dave? And they wanted, they wanted that, they asked for it to be struck, and, you know, and it, so what we said Tricia would do is look into it to see if we could just leave it as is, but
You can't take it out, you have to have something.
You have to have something.
Budget committee is required and board of selectmen.
Okay, alright, so you know, so that was just, that was a specific request by the nonprofits that we look into just eliminating any reference to our recommendation, and I think Dennis had his hand up, but
I know he did. And so did Mark, so a few other people.
Yeah, so that's
Could we put that the board of selectmen recommend it to be up to the voters?
I'll tell you what, for next year, since we know that this is an issue,
let's, let's look at that for the next years and then continue on with past practice at this point. The town has resoundly supported these with one or two very quick changes, after culture and library got locked into one, we fixed that, or you fixed that in a hurry, so.
Yeah, I mean
My feeling is not to change anything, we've already done this, it's worked, and sorry if they feel it's a negative vote, but it's up to the townspeople, which is why it's there. They petitioned it, so
If it was a negative vote, it would have been no.
Yep. If you're gonna change it, make a motion.
No, I mean, no, there wasn't, Tricia did her due diligence, we have to have something in there, so
Any changes in that? Okay, thanks, next. Get to we've got a lot to get to, so don't take this personally, folks, we got lots of things. Article We're down to revenue budget article. See if the voters at town or county vote for it.
Alright, so on that one, Steve, we have one million one hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-three. Compared to last year, it was seven hundred and ninety thousand two hundred and four. And the difference is use of undesignated fund balance, three hundred and sixty thousand. Plus a few other minor changes, so it's a total additional revenue of about three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That could be utilized to reduce that tax commitment, it would have a big impact on the increase in the budget, so.
Any questions on that? Yes?
So this is what we talked about. Where we had budgeted we're under budget like six hundred and fifty-six thousand, one sixty-four twelve in two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, so
And it was almost, yeah.
Three hundred and sixty thousand was an increase last year. We had the Article seventeen, that's what we use it. Three hundred and sixty thousand increased the unassigned fund balance. That means, still leaves a million seven hundred thousand in the unassigned fund balance for cash flow purposes for the first half of the year. And then the rest is excess, so it's like surplus, that's what you used to call just surplus. So that is available
Right.
To reduce, you know, have an impact on
Yeah, because also it's
So and what I referenced at the public hearing was one mil rate increase with the town's value of five hundred and nine million, oh, yeah, million is five hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Half a million.
That's what one mil rate would increase, so if you take that extra three hundred and sixty thousand and after what we did tonight, the budget's gonna be like I don't know, four hundred and twenty, maybe more than last year? So that would, that would make that less than a hundred thousand.
So a big increase in taxes again.
Additional taxes, so you're looking at
Is that a big increase?
No, not big.
It's not.
Not in terms of tax grade, if you added that to what the school had last year in the county, it would be less than a half a mill rate.
It's it's because that three hundred and sixty thousand unassigned fund balance that can be carried forward, that's the offset. If we didn't have it, then we'd be looking at
Another benefit.
A big increase.
You'd be looking at just the town, just under a half a mill rate.
Yeah.
Not a whole mill rate, I'm sorry. One mil rate, yeah.
So are you, so are you automatically incorporating that into the estimated revenues, or do we have to have a
I think we want to just add to that language to make sure that that's the revenue, but to make sure that the revenue projection includes
Yeah.
Three hundred and sixty thousand from the unassigned fund balance.
Right.
So people know that that's part of that million dollar figure. So the time, anytime you use the fund balance, you should have the town authorize you to use the fund balance money, because I've seen towns get in a big trouble by not doing that.
So do you need a motion?
Yes.
So Yeah, and then we'll add a little language to make sure everybody knows portion of that is your town down.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Set? All in favor? Next is the ordinance articles. Ordinance article number one. Shall an ordinance entitled Town of Rangey Marijuana Business and Facilities Ordinance be enacted and shall sections? Section thirty-eight point four point six of chapter thirty-eight be amended to add the following categories of use? I don't see any changes in this at all from the last one, go ahead.
In parentheses, I put PB equals planning board, so that's explained, just so you're aware.
Yeah, thank you, because they asked for that.
And then on the appendix, there was where we took out woodlands and, period was left, so I got rid of the and. So that's, that's just typed up.
Yes, Cindy?
I just, this is something I talked with John about. It's it's a two-part ordinance, so kind of hard to understand how one flows into the other. I just wanted to suggest we add a clause before and, so that they understand that the ordinance, okay. Shall an ordinance entitled Town of Rangey Marijuana Business and Facilities Ordinance be enacted to include two marijuana, and just mimic what is down here in the chart. Two marijuana business cultivation, two marijuana business manufacturing, and two marijuana business retail. And then continue on, and shall these sections, just so everything kind of ties in. That's, that was just a recommendation that I had just with adding just adding that descriptor before and, and so that they can see the everything, that they match, they correlate.
What's everybody's thoughts on that? Do you want to make that a motion?
I
Or do you want to have some discussion first?
You're the chairman. What do you want?
It doesn't change anything, it just
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, it's just for the sake, I mean, and say, typically, we don't have combined ordinance articles, you know, where so, you know, this, so the facilities ordinance, you know. What does it do? Well, it allows two marijuana business cultivation to, and to keep the same order as it's listed in, in the land use, just so there is, they can see a connection. That's all I was suggesting.
Ordinance articles typically are multifaceted, and it is incumbent upon almost everybody to either allow the code enforcement office to interpret it correctly or for them to come in and read it themselves. You know, normally, I would I don't see any, it doesn't, like Donnie says, it doesn't change anything, but
I don't know.
What's your thoughts, Joe?
The way Cindy just read it, it does clarify the question a little more simply. Like we talked on the phone, most people who are coming in to want to build anything or do anything, they're gonna look at the, you know, the chart that's in the zoning ordinance to see what projects are allowed in what zone. So they're gonna come in and say, oh, okay. I can see, I can have a retail marijuana business in a downtown commercial zone with a planning board permit. Okay? Then they're gonna go to the marijuana ordinance and find out. Okay, there's only two allowed, and the district isn't the whole downtown commercial district, it's only both ends of it. I mean, that, that's what they're gonna find from, like you just said. Someone has to come in with due diligence. But this, I mean, when you only see three sections here, when that's added to the whole list of all the town projects, that's gonna make a lot more sense and be a lot more clear in that sense.
Well, my fear is this. We start monkeying around with this at this late of the game, you're gonna need a legal opinion, which is gonna put it outside of her purview to have this done by Friday. So, yes?
Kristen, the town attorney wrote that.
So you're okay with the suggestion that she
No, the town attorney wrote this article question.
I'm agreeing with you, so what I'm suggesting, or what I'm saying is that
Don't mess with it.
If there, if we mess with this, it's gonna need to be reviewed. So we're not making a mistake, right now, we're not making a mistake according to the review. That's my point.
The wording has been okay, everything's, okay, then leave it alone.
Yeah, but I don't understand
I mean, I think you, I get your point, Cindy, I don't see
It's, it's Be anything extra or to prove.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just a matter of clarification for people reading, I mean you know, I, you know, I don't, I don't care about who's looking at a marijuana business or whatnot, it's for the sake of clarification, and this isn't anything that we haven't kicked back before, you know, when we're talking about rewording things or or, I mean, that's what, that's what, you know. This is all just for the sake of clarification to tie to tie the first part of the question in with the second part. So these aren't two separate questions, which is the other thing John kind of, you know, talked about that.
Yeah, it might have been clearer because of two separate ordinances here, but most people, like you say, most people don't understand the complexities of these ordinances.
Yep.
You know, that's why you need a code enforcement, but
Yeah, I was just thinking for the, for the sake of tying both together, you know, they both would have the same the same language in both the chart and in the first part of the, of the ordinance, that's all.
Okay, Tracy?
Would it be helpful if we put an asterisk by this and same thing as the other, put a description within the town report that explains to the folks exactly what you're saying?
Would you be happy with that?
We don't have to change the way the warrant is written, we just have additional information within the town report explaining it a little bit more clearly.
Yep, that's
Sounds like a better plan.
Would you own have some, Emily, to help her draft that?
I don't think, I mean, I think it's just, yeah, I mean, I think it's fine, it's just a matter of just identifying what's being approved.
Yep, that's a good idea. So are you happy with that, Cindy?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I'd rather have, I'd rather they didn't have to dig for the information, I'll be honest with you, I'd rather have it there.
I'm just worried about, you know, getting this to legal to be reviewed again, because it is, it has already been done. Any, any other changes on this? All ready to go with this? Yes.
So, again, I don't like that we're putting a fee of a hundred dollars in case that fee is different.
That's later.
That's what?
It's not, it's not a part of the article, no.
Okay. Number two. Shall an ordinance entitled Flood Plane Management Ordinance for the Town of Rangey Maine be enacted to replace the current chapter eleven of town code? be enacted to replace the current chapter eleven of the town code? Any changes in that? Article ordinance three, shall an amendment to the town code, chapter twenty-two, entitled nuisance slash noise be enacted? Article twenty-six point six point eleven is added to read, any business that holds a valid liquor license issued by the state of Maine may have musical entertainment during, during normal business hours. Changes?
So we could add a descriptor to this ordinance question, but not the ordinance question one?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So they, a descriptor could be added to this ordinance, number three, but we can't add a clause to ordinance one?
That's the only change. That's not a descriptor. That's the only change. That's the actual language. And it was just one sentence.
Is this supposed to be a question mark under enacted?
That's actually state law, I believe. That if you have a liquor license, you can have live music without getting a permit.
That's correct. I think it's his idea because they changed state.
We found that out by heart, wait one more time.
We changed that. Drop the state law line.
What's your question?
No, I just asked her if there should be a question mark after, but it is, and then it explains after the question. Okay.
Okay, and then you're saying state law? It is.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from, Tracy, do you have some? Tracy?
No.
Okay, good. Ordinance four, shall an ordinance entitled Chapter Thirty-seven Disbursement Warrant Ordinance be enacted? Any changes in that? Ask him for yes or no on that. Look what we've come to. The end? Ten minutes to seven. Join me for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give me just a few seconds here.
Yeah, I have to show some stuff here.
Anybody need water, bathroom break? Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at six fifty-three.
The girls and men needed a little break.
What's that?
I think they needed a break.
Yeah. If you could, if you could join me for a moment of silence, please, for men and women in uniform, and kindly think of the state policeman who was tragically killed in Siamania this week. Thank you. You know, since we enacted this little code of silence thing, I know there's not many of you here, but you see a lot of people in town. I have added no less than twenty-five comments on how they are very happy that we're recognizing folks who serve in uniform. One lady did ask me, she said, are you including firemen? I said, anybody who wears a uniform. Yes. We'll wait till those two, are they coming back?
They've answered. There's nothing open and down.
Tricia's gonna work on the warrant.
Okay, very good.
Before we've done it all.
Okay, John, adjustments to the agenda.
I want to add an executive session on personal matters, just me. I want just to briefly let you know that waste management, since you approved the contract, added tires, money or amendment, same price, same home, which is, take second thoughts, I want to mention that to you. And they also dropped interim from me as town manager. And those are the two. I didn't want to sign it and send it in until I let you know that they did change that. We have a request from the Fire Department Association to put on the warrant, so maybe have the town move over a couple acres of land up by the transfer station. Dennis is here to discuss that.
We're gonna take that up under consent items on the number six.
And then I have a, I think we should probably just put out a quick RFQ from Engineering Services, for Loon Lake Road. I know there's been a lot of discussion in the past about it, but Darryl has just notified the State Economic Development Committee that we intend to apply for a northern boardage grant for the other half of the money. The DOT's already done it, so we might, whatever you want to do, if you want us to put out for new engineering services to come in and discuss that, then it's up to you. When you know what he wishes, I will do it. So I think we need to do it sooner rather than later.
Let's talk about that under whole business, okay?
Yeah.
Whole business.
Okay, I need to, we'll move to number three. You all set, John?
Yeah.
Okay, move to number three, approve minutes for March eighteenth budget meeting, March eighteenth regular meeting, and April first reduced agenda meeting. Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes of March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen budget meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes for March eighteen, two thousand nineteen. This is the selectman's regular meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Donnie's. Any discussion? Changes, omissions? All in favor? Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes for April first, two thousand nineteen, for reduced agenda meeting.
Second.
I wasn't here. I wasn't here. So the three of you, all in favor? We'll move.
So can you make, can you make the motion? Can you make the motion if you weren't here?
I get it.
No, but can you?
Shelley, would you make that motion, please?
I make a motion to accept the minutes for April first, two thousand and nineteen.
I'm pretty sure I can make the motion. It's okay. Cindy, you go first.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we got the three same votes. Very good. We're covered. Two of us, so we stay. Public to speak on the non-agenda items. Mr. Borba.
Yes, could I ask a couple of questions about the marijuana ordinance?
You can.
Okay, thank you.
You do realize the warrants moving forward?
I do, I do. I'm just trying to improve my understanding of it. On page one, there are the, it's about the ordinance not limiting any privileges or rights from the main medical use of marijuana act. Now, I'm not familiar with that act, but I was just wondering if that act prohibits the town from restrictions to that act? You know, if the town, you know, if that's a, just a hands-off thing or if, if at some point the town could, you know, impose further restrictions on that act on a town basis.
Is the question, is the question, can we change our ordinances to reflect or is that what you're asking?
Yeah, can the town have any effect on this main medical use of marijuana act?
What page you want?
Page one. Because it says this ordinance, you know, doesn't mess with it, and I'm just wondering if it could have.
I don't have any answer for that. You want to respond to it?
Sure. It really depends on what you're, what part of the act you're talking about. So in terms of people cultivating their own plants at their residence, the town cannot, has no right to, to address that or change that or alter that anyway. As of December thirteenth, the state passed a new law where if the town needs to opt in, so anybody coming in that wants to operate any such medical marijuana business, the town has to opt in to do it or they can't. So prior to that, if, as a current caregiver at any residence, and they're just taking care of patients out of their home, the state will say that the town cannot regulate that. That's what it is. If that answers your question.
It's helpful. Thank you. Because what I just kind of got wondering, as you know, I didn't know how, not being familiar with this act, I don't know what rights it gives to caregivers to raise marijuana. And I, I understand, I tried calling the state and talking to those two girls that run that, but they weren't in, when they called me back, I have my antique cell phone down in the woods and so, I'm not sure. The communication was, was the best, but if I understood it right, that a caregiver can care for five people, and they can have six mature plants for each of those five patients, for a total of thirty plants.
That's what it was prior to December thirteenth. Now, you can still only cultivate thirty flowering plants, but you, there's no limit on the amount of patients you can, that you can sell product to. So.
Okay.
But anything, December thirteenth will be on. It's the town would have to opt in. So it's anything in the past, these people can have thirty plants. Actually, thirty-six if they have their own card. They can sell the thirty.
Thirty fathers plus six of their own?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I got, just kind of, I didn't know how in step this ordinance was with this medical marijuana act, you know, and I just kept wondering, you know, if they'd end up conflicting because, you know, say Mike Sermonora became a caregiver, you know, and the area where he's in, you know, you're not allowed to have a marijuana business. He doesn't have a backyard. So if he put thirty plants in his front yard next to the sidewalk, you know, would that defeat some of the things the ordinance is trying to account? And so it got me wondering about that. And then the other thing was about the, the existing business thing. And I kind of understand it to read, you know, that if you set up a business and then somebody puts in a daycare next year or something like that, you don't have to move, you know. That's, you know, you came in when things were legal. But I didn't know, you know, how these ordinance are, you know, you got lawyers, you know, for different clients, you know, trying to look at them from a million different angles. And so I didn't know how much of this grandfathering thing, that thing kind of did, you know. And I asked the code enforcement officer, I said, are there any established marijuana businesses in town? Does anyone have a conditional use permit or no? And he says, no. He said, any marijuana businesses in town, medical? And I said, okay. I said, how many of those are there? He said, I don't know. He said, I think there's between eight and twelve or something like that. I said, well, do you have a registration of these things? And he said, no, we don't have a list or registration of them. And so that kind of got me wondering further, you know. If there is this kind of grandfathering thing, even in the future, you know, if the town doesn't have a register of who's a caregiver and who's not, and then someone's trying to do something and they say, you know, well, I've been, I, I'm an established business, but if there's no record of them, you know, how do you grandfather something that you really don't know exists? You know, and I thought that could be problematic in the future and create some conflicts.
I think your points are fabulous. I'm not joking around with you, but I think you're in the wrong arena. I think you need to be talking to the planning board to find out if these have been addressed.
May I ask you a question?
And, and could I just?
Yes, I'm just asking a question.
Well, I haven't quite, go ahead.
No, you finish it.
No.
Because I was, I helped write the ordinance.
I know, I know.
The, the, what this really addresses is the whole retail piece, whether it's medical retail or recreational retail. I mean, and that, there are none of those currently in. And we wanted to make sure that, okay, if a person, whether you like this business or not, if they dot the i's, cross the t's, and they do everything according to what we've asked them to do, it would not then be fair to them for us at some point in time for another business open, which would put them in a exclusion zone. But it's not about an individual who's a caregiver right now, but that caregiver cannot open up a retail store and sell their stuff. So even if he had a business that was growing his own plants, he can't sell that out of a storefront. So that, that's a, that's a no-go. So that's not gonna happen. There's no grandfathering of that because none of those exist. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, basically, nobody's grandfathering in this town because nobody can't begin a permit for it.
Okay.
Okay, Luke, Mark, Scott. I think, I think your points are well taken. You're, this, this horse is in the barn right now in terms of the ordinance. But, and I do believe that the planning board and the code enforcement officer need to look at the points you're bringing up.
Well, you folks moved it to the agenda, to, to the warrant, you know, and.
After how many public hearings? After how much due diligence by the ordinance committee?
The final draft, I didn't come out enough time to, you know, to get all the questions answered, in, in my opinion.
Uh-huh, yeah.
You know, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying.
No, it's fine.
That's the way.
Thing is, it can be tweaked down the road here.
What's that?
It can be tweaked down the road.
Well, yeah, but I just, I just want to understand what I'm voting for. Because, you know, if I had, the last thought I want, you know, was if I had a vacant piece of residential land and I had four, five house lots, residences next to it, and they all got a caregiver thing, and they all had thirty plants outside, you know, and the fragrance of those, you know, hundred and fifty plants or whatever, you know, made that undesirable, you know, I'm just wondering about, you know, my future property values and things like that, if this is a possibility that I need to be concerned about or not. And so maybe, you know, Dave must, must understand it pretty well.
Well, I think everybody here has heard these kinds of points already. Cindy has been very clear about a number of times the residential component, and her last suggestion was to also include woodland in this thing, to eliminate those sorts of things. If you have your four lots in an industrial zone and you're gonna.
I'm a residential, I'm talking about residential though.
Go ahead, Cindy, you've had your hand up.
I, I just, I talked, I called John earlier because, I mean, Donnie, Donnie's, you know, and Tricia said earlier that, you know, we, the selectmen have, you know, have, can make changes up until it goes to print. Any changes to the ordinance after that is by, is by town vote, okay? So we're voting on this initial draft, and I had a couple of things I wanted, I, I called John early that I wanted to speak to. And maybe during the selectman time, I, I don't know what is appropriate, but I just noticed that, you know, the industrial zone isn't added to a couple of them, and I, you know, was, was going to suggest that. But this is, this is the public to speak on a non-agenda item, which is what Mark is doing. I just wanted, you know, I just wanted to let you know that I had talked with John early, and I just wanted to bring up some, some minor suggestions for later.
And I'm just trying.
Carry on, Mark.
I'm, I'm not just trying to understand what, what is it I'm voting on and what implications it's gonna have.
I'm not stopping you. I'm just giving you a suggestion of where I think you should go with these concerns. Because the planning board is gonna.
What kind of the answer people, you know, for, in all these warrant articles. So that's why I brought it up with you.
Thank you. What's that?
Isn't it, hasn't it always been presented?
No, thank you, Mark.
And given by the ordinance committee?
Do it louder.
So isn't it, basically, as Mark is concerned, he should be coming to us because they've already approved it on their end, and now it's in our ballpark and on our warrant, right?
There's no argument on any of this. I did not close Mark down at all.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, I think that, yes. Because you're saying go back to the ordinance committee, but if it's now going to be on the warrant, the only time we go back to ordinance committee is if everyone voted it down.
You're gonna change the ordinance to next year's vote.
Right.
Correct.
You didn't shut me down, but you couldn't answer my question.
I told you that from the beginning, yeah.
Told me that I need to go someplace else to find out. What question?
I also tried to direct you to where you could get some answers.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it is, okay, yep.
It just surprised me, you know, I know Dave didn't want to discuss it. He said at the last selectman's meeting that he thought it was a waste of his time, but I was hoping you folks would listen to me and want to talk about it.
It was a waste of my time to debate whether people liked marijuana or didn't like marijuana. The discussion was supposed to be about whether we want to put the ordinance in front of the people or not, just to clarify.
Not the, not discussing the ordinance itself?
I didn't have a problem discussing the ordinance, but the type, the conversations we've all, we keep going back to is whether this person likes it, this person doesn't like it, this person likes it, this person doesn't like it. Garrett Schaefer asked us, where do you stand on this? My personal opinion, it doesn't matter. I mean, I don't use this stuff. So I, and nothing gained from it, but we're talking about an ordinance and whether or not it should go in front of the people. If you have questions about the ordinance, more than happy to talk about the ordinance. But personal opinion about whether or not somebody should smoke it or not.
I interpreted you to think that, you know, you couldn't be bothered to talk about it.
No, it was a waste of my, it was a waste of my life. No, it was a waste of my, it was a waste of my life to sit here and argue about whether or not somebody wants to smoke marijuana or doesn't want to smoke marijuana.
And that's not where I'm going either. I don't care about that aspect of this either.
So if, if they wanted to talk about the actual ordinance and the substance of the ordinance, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But every time we have a hearing, it, it gets into debate about whether or not it's right or wrong. I mean, and this isn't a right or wrong issue. This is, do we opt in? So we have control over what comes in? So it's not more than two of any of these facilities? So it's not residential? It's not within now, it has to be in commercial. So that's, that's the substance we should be discussing. And whether or not it should go in front of the townspeople? I think it's up to the townspeople whether or not we should have an ordinance.
I, I don't know that, you know, I know, I don't know anything about this Medical Marijuana Act, you know, and how it aligns with this ordinance, but, you know, could you shed some light on that?
No, no, you're bringing all the points forward.
Okay, I'll bring it all the, okay, so, so I just think, you know, we should see if, how well-aligned these things are, and if, you know, the... Because the, if the ordinance is, is fine, you know, you don't want the Medical Marijuana Act undermining it. You know, if there's a separate, it looks like there's two separate set of rules, and you know, that...
I know you're a bit of a bristle at this, Mark, but I'm sorry. I sat in this room when Cindy Egan was the chair, listening to debate about marijuana and what the ordinance committee was going through, well before I got on this board. So this is a topic that has been on the forefront and the burners of the selectmen for over two years. So to suggest that we haven't given due diligence or allowed enough time for people, and at the eleventh hour now to, to change things, I don't...
It's only the eleventh hour, because people feel the need that we need to address it right this year. And the state doesn't, the woman I talked to on the phone from the state on the Medical Marijuana thing, said that, she was telling me that, I said, you know, are there any dispensary cultivation facilities, you know, in the Ransley area? And she told me, no. She said, the closest one to you folks are in Gardena. She said, there's only eight dispensary licenses issued. And, and she said, none of them were issued to individuals, that they were all issued to nonprofits. Is that, is that true?
That's, that's accurate. In terms of dispensaries, yes.
What was I calling?
Well, well, you were saying dispensaries.
Oh, yeah, okay.
There's only eight in the entire state.
Eight dispensaries.
The rest are caregiver storefronts.
Yeah, I wasn't talking storefront, I was just, dispensary cultivation facilities and dispensaries. There's just one license for, you know, both of them. And the same thing with caregivers. You're a caregiver and a caregiver, and you don't need a separate license to be caregiver cultivation thing. Is that correct? You know, that, that one designation, that one registration with the state. See, the state has these people register themselves, these caregivers, I guess. That's not public information, but...
Yes, hold on, Cindy?
Yeah, I just, it's, the, the problem is, Steve, is that this document has only been accessible in the past couple of months. So that's...
The final document, correct.
Yeah, the, the selectmen, we, we never saw drafts. I mean, it's, they, they were working on the document. And so the, the ability for the public to comment has just become available in the past couple of months. So that's why, you know, you're getting people, you know, asking questions now.
Mm-hmm. Questions are fine. You have one comment?
Just one comment. I'm more than willing to sit down with anybody, Mark, specifically you at this point, and answer anything, kind of go over it, really reply to, comb, explain how everything works. And the fact that there's no issue with anybody putting up operations besides, say, four or five lots, because they're no grandfather, if they don't exist now, they can't be. So, but anyway, we can sit down for an hour, and if that's...
Right, thank you. Anything else on the, all set, Mark? Anything else on the public to speak? Okay, thank you. Ransley Region Economic Opportunities Committee, she, she left a few minutes ago, well, an hour ago. I'm gonna turn to you, Shelley, and fill us in.
Basically, this is just a copy of the last meeting that we had with an update with the dollar amounts. And that's basically it. We had just, all of this, basically, the minutes from there, from our meeting.
Yep, I read those. I just wanted you to fill in any blanks if there was any. Any questions for us?
Okay, where'd you come up with the figure? How did you get to that figure?
For the, for, you mean for the sidewalk thing?
Yeah.
That actually, there is a separate committee that is for that, that Joe Haley's a part of, that Kate Philbrick is a part of, Kate Williams. There's, there's a group of them.
And Keith as well.
And Keith was part of that as well. And they, that's how they came up with those figures.
Any other questions? Consent items, dispersment warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve AP warrant number forty-sixteen on three hundred and thirty-one thousand, six sixty-two eighty-six.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Liquor license, red onion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve liquor license renewal for the Red Onion Restaurant Incorporated.
Second.
Discussion? Aerial nun, all in favor? That include regular and off-premise too, correct?
Yeah, the divestment, is that included in?
That was a yes, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, yes. Sewer reserve purchase up to six thousand. Keith, give us an update on the snowmobile situation, since we still have plenty of snow.
Let me see if I can keep this as easy and simple as possible, status.
Good luck.
So obviously, through our budget process, I requested six thousand dollars in capital equipment to, to replace the snowmobile that has been deemed kind of un, unproper for our facility. It's not, it just wasn't designed for the use that we require. An opportunity has presented itself at Snowmobile, a local snowmobile through Atlantic Marine. It's a used snowmobile. So my, so my proposal would be, the requested price of the snowmobile, six thousand dollars. Atlantic Marine has offered to take ours and trade for eleven hundred. However, what I did is I presented this opportunity to Mike Bacon, the fire chief, as I know, next year, for the budget processes, he's gonna request AP snowmobile to replacement of their units. So my proposal is to take our current snowmobile, sell it to the fire department for, like, suggested fifteen hundred dollars. Knowing that it has, through, through an inspection, needs a track, apparently. We know it needed one ski, but apparently it needs a track too. So it'd be a, requires some, a certain cost from fire department. But with that knowledge, fifteen hundred dollars then comes from the fire department, leaving a balance of forty-five hundred dollars. That's how our request becomes. If I can request forty-five hundred dollars from our reserve, with the fifteen hundred dollars from the fire department, and purchase this sled in this current fiscal year, rather than putting it in front of the budget process.
So you want to take the six thousand out and put forty-five hundred in, yes?
Take six thousand dollars out of the reserve, and put fifteen hundred dollars from the fire department back in. However you want to comprise that six thousand dollars. But it's a sled that, again, presented itself, and it's recommendation through Atlantic Marine, the fire department, and myself, that both sleds at this point serve a better purpose in the proposed departments.
Makes sense.
Questions?
It's a win-win for this year, I think.
Okay, need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve purchase of a snowmobile of up to six thousand dollars to be taken out of the sewer reserve.
Second.
Any more discussion? You all set with this, John?
Yeah, it's the, you know, it's the kind of thing where, you know, how do you even bid out of, you know, the used machines, you know? That's why it's before you...
Okay, all in favor? No offense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Personnel policy update, second reading. Comments? I see markers on yours, Cindy.
No, everyone has that one.
No, we got the red one.
I thought that was beige one, sorry, yeah. You all set with it, everyone? Would you like a motion to adopt?
Yeah, it's just the words, actual time worked in that, under overtime.
Yep.
So Mr. Chair... Under the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the policy revision in Article Six, work week slash overtime, where employees, not exempt from the Fair Standards Act, Fair Labor Standards Act, shall receive overtime pay after forty hours of actual time worked.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next is from the Firemen's Association. Mr. Mark Keith has approached the town as a representative from that group to purchase for a dollar some land up at the transfer station. Dennis, be kind enough, could you go over this with us?
Sure, I'll try to make it quick, I'm just busy. This has been, for an issue that's been going on for quite a number of years. Years and years ago, the Firemen's Association had a, had a lean-to and a cookout place at the airport where Steve Dean's handled it, I don't know if you remember that at all. So, where the new, what about the area where Larry's new hangar is, the big hangar? And so they were gonna make those improvements, so they moved us onto the other side of the airport, over by the head site for the cable TV. And at that time, we can't find the record of it here in the townhouse, but they gave us the ninety-nine year lease to be over there. And so we put up a lean-to, and we put up a, brought up an old building that we got, and restored our hand pumper in that building. And our other antique, which we keep, is stored at someone's home right now. We'd like to get it out of there. So along comes the airport thing, and the FAA has all kinds of regulations about what you need to do, this and that. So we just kind of was thinking about, maybe we just get out of there. And so we'd be willing to give up our claim on any lease that was given to us up there. If we could get a piece of land down on the transfer station land, a couple acres, two and a half acres, so that we could own it, number one, so that we could go borrow money, so we could build ourselves a building, put our two antiques in, restore it, and a place to work on, and that type of thing. And a place that we could have a cookout if we wanted to, or gather, whatever. And it would be kind of out of the way, but it would be off the airport, so we wouldn't have to deal with that anymore. And then we would clean up, take out the stuff that we have at the airport, and we'd be down the road.
So the, the request is to have a warrant article to read, to see if the town will vote itself for one dollar and other considerations. A two and a half acre parcel of land off Loon Lake Road at the town transfer station to the Ransley Firemen's Association, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit charitable organization. The terms of the sale are to be negotiated by the Board of Selectmen.
Question.
Go ahead.
Does this, can, can the selectmen just do this, or do we have to go to town?
We're putting it on the warrant.
I know that. Why? Do we, I mean, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, you can't sell town land without approval.
We can't. We're not selling, while we are selling here.
For dough.
Why don't we just give it to you?
The terms, the terms that Dennis talked about earlier today was that should this organization disband, which we will include in our term sheet, and, and the negotiation by the Board of Selectmen is that should they disband, it gets reverted right back to the town.
Yep.
It's going nowhere but between the fire department organization and the town.
We'd really like to own the land, because then we can go to a bank to borrow some money, owning the land and not, the chances of, Shelley, I can tell you, probably better to borrow money on a piece of land we own than, than one that is leased to us.
Yep. We'll go up School Street, the lottery next to the fire station.
Way down here?
I don't know.
So, skateboard park on there.
It's not as big, but...
That's not very big. I mean, it would be kind of nice to be right there in town, but it's really not big enough to store those two pieces of equipment, and have kind of like, you know, with the wellness, we could store our other things there.
I always had other plans for that.
That is a sore subject.
I know, I, I thought that the ambulance was going down that street.
Okay. I want to move the ambulance down there.
I do too, but that's come up against a lot of resistance, so.
I talked with Keith today, and we looked at the locations up there, kind of picked out a, a general location, but the specifics of that, we can, we can...
Yes, Keith?
Just to speak on that real quick, we did speak earlier, and I did follow up a little bit with Earl and some other members that have, have an understanding of the property, which is, they're asking for two and a half acres out of a hundred and twenty-seven acres that are available at the transfer station location. The spot indicated that we kind of preliminarily picked. This could be beneficial to both the town and the fire association. Earl's rec, Earl's recollection of this portion is a snowmobile trailer that currently goes through there. Apparently, it was potentially a proposed second entrance to the transfer station. So whether I could do, could allow down the driveway entrance, that's currently kind of in place, and they could put their lot up, and then we could have a, a gate or a second area entrance into the facility. So it may be beneficial to all.
There you go.
As we develop.
Cool, thank you.
Good foresight.
One, one thing that would be really nice is that if we had a vote for the selectmen on this particular item, had a, had their recommendation, that would be great.
Shelley?
What is the total cost by separating it out, having the survey done? Anyone know the total cost for that?
We don't have any numbers on that yet, no. We need, we need permission to move over.
Might be able to get a survey for nothing.
I, I think Danny's rates are reasonable. We did pay for it, like, four hundred bucks.
Okay.
For cheap, rough ideas.
I would imagine that this 501(c)(3) organization could raise a few hundred bucks to get the survey done, to be able to do that.
You could, I mean, you go through the process, and the town get a hold of the survey, it would get a price, and we can participate in that price.
Yep. I, I'm gonna tell you that that'll be part of the negotiations with the Board of Selectmen when we get to that point.
Well, we'd really like to get things going, so that we could get started working on it this summer, if we're successful getting it, so we can give up some money and clear it at least. And we can probably be, have our thing at the airport there until we get it, and up down there, so we can move, move out of there.
Right. Any more discussion from the board?
I'll make a motion to do this on the warrant.
Second.
We good? All in favor? It will reflect a five to zero vote in support of this warrant article.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Correspondents? You've read the internal control report art, from Ron, how do you say his last name?
Belleville.
Is it below?
Belleville.
Boulou.
Belleville? Okay, thank you. Any?
Fellow Frenchman, I don't know.
How did you pronounce him?
Boulou.
Boulou, oh, okay.
Boulou.
Like Foragard, P-E-A-O.
Oh, yeah. Any discussion on the correspondence?
No, I, I thought we were a little hard on him, in all honesty, when he was here.
Kill the messenger.
Yeah, I mean, it's... Yeah, we, you know, we hired him to do a job, and, and he did it. And, you know, didn't like some of the things he had to share with us, but I thought, I thought we could have been a little more thankful.
Any other comments? Okay, all, all business. Downtown revitalization plan update. I don't see anything in there.
We approved it, but we keep it on there, so no one knows that we forgot it.
Okay, we have an RFQ, John would like us to do an RFQ for the Loon Lake Road project.
So moved. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Done.
There you go.
Draft media policy, number nine.
I just saw a typo on page one, one, two, third paragraph down. The town recognizes employees may need incidental personal, just an AL-added use of its equipment.
Anything else? All right, while you're looking, I've got anything from you, Dave? Anything, Donnie?
No.
You found it?
Yep. So in regards to the calls about where, on the cell phones, where...
Tell us where you are.
Page. On the cellphone part.
Cellphone?
There's no pages, this kind of part of... Is that, looking at the cell phones, and then at the same time in the personnel policy on toll calls, it says no toll calls will be made... on toll calls, it says no toll calls will be made by a town employee unless in the performance of his or her job, or a personal emergency on any, I just wanna make sure that we're staying in conjunction with personnel policy versus the cellphone policy. Then, let's see.
Kate, let's get that answered before we move to the next one. You have any comments on that, John?
No, we'll look into it.
Okay, next.
And then, let's see, I had work-related calls on, it's on page, I don't know, page one, two, three page, first paragraph, and it says related called, I'm thinking that's supposed to be calls in their capacity, official capacity, and, just to type. And then, under personnel, personal devices, it's the second, the third sentence, it says, "It-if-is necessary."
It-if-is?
It-if-is.
Is-if-is. Just saying, I think there should be a "by" in there, or whatever, I don't remember what I, yeah, just...
Just put "if" and...
Something was up.
It is necessary, yep.
And then, on the last page, where it says media relations, where it says about, everything goes through the town manager, in regards to that, does that also apply to the selectmen, or is this honestly just for the employees, and that's it?
Well, most of your things are up to the town manager to manage, so...
Right.
In our media relations policy, it says the employees need to go through the town manager, the select board needs to go through the chair.
So, I didn't know if that needed to be added in here? So, in that, would that apply for the all boards?
That's a good point.
It is. It is.
I don't have a problem with that.
Because there's sometimes where it would be nice if each person coming onto a board has complete direction on what is expected of them, and I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you.
And then, on that same page, under the second arrow, a period after interest.
Say again?
A period after interest.
On Facebook.
What's that, Charlie? Cindy, you all set?
I'm good.
Dave? Tony? All right, my turn. Hold on.
Wrap that gavel.
It's all right, I wanna make sure you got all of her points.
Yeah, can we, I'll just be able to look through both policies, make sure we get adjusted what you...
When I looked at the personnel policy, that toll call business made me think that this was landline authorization, you know, just making generally long-distance phone calls, where this really deals more with cell phones and that, you don't run into that same sort of problem. That's just my interpretation. Town-owned devices, there's a, under the first paragraph, where it says, "Employees have no expectation of privacy in their use of, in any electronic communications sent or received using town equipment, network, or Internet services." There needs to be something in this thing that includes their private lines, where discussing town, town policies, town business, and whatnot.
Yeah, no email in there.
That needs to be in there, and I don't find it. Second point, third paragraph down, last words start off with me here. Downloading of materials or loading of program software into any part of the system without permission of the town's technical staff or town manager is prohibited. I think you should also include supervisor. If you have, since Keith is sitting here, you have a employee in the town drives that is looking to download some software regarding truck manuals and things of that nature, to me, a supervisor ought to be able to say that's appropriate, they ought to be able to do that. So, supervisor, in my opinion, needs to be included in that.
Or department head, maybe?
Or town manager.
Department head.
Correct. However, supervisor, department head, whatever terminology, but to me, those examples, and that also should be applied to prohibited use. Any downloading of materials or loading of program software on any part of the system without permission of the town's technical staff or department head or town manager is prohibited. You might want to get some clarification on that. Now, personnel devices, personal devices over here. Professionalism is expected of all town employees, et cetera. If you skip on down to the last sentence, during meetings, all devices must be turned off as to not interfere with town business. I don't think that's correct. I don't want to see Keith with his machine off at a meeting and have something catastrophic happen, and he can't be reached. I don't think that's a smart move. So, you might want to put some different verbiage in there that you can't expect an ambulance personnel shut off all their pages and whatnot, because they're gonna get called out. Yep.
Isn't that personnel?
Cell phones can be put on by...
I took that as their personal, not their town issued. Not their town issued.
Right, but read the whole paragraph. It talks about town meetings, town employee meetings, it talks about things that go on in this building, or in buildings like this. And if it's clear to everybody else, and that's not appropriate, don't do it, just pointing it out.
No, I think you just put it on vibrate, that's no big deal.
About all devices, something like all devices.
Turn to vibrate. I attended, at the Main River Water Conference, they, two-thirds of all of the presenters for the conference to get our license renewals, asked everybody to turn their phones off. And one guy stood up, and he goes, "I'm not doing it. I'm the superintendent of the Bangor Water District, and if they need me, I'm gonna listen." And then, everybody changed their whole theory about this whole thing, because there are people that need to have that connectivity.
Absolutely.
So, that, take it on again.
There can be personal reasons as well, I mean, I had, I was, you know, I've had my daughter's daughter driving down to Portland, and I'm, you know, I wanna know when she gets there, or if she, you know, or if she has a problem, or, you know, if she's had a, so there are just different specific scenarios that I've had, you know, waiting for results of a doctor's appointment or whatnot, that I just think there are exceptions.
Yep. Okay, last per...
Sorry, go ahead.
No?
I was gonna say...
Actually, I'm not quite done on that one.
Go ahead.
Thanks, so, okay, last page, town, the three bullet points, you see the three arrows? Where it says, "The town made disciplined employees for posting, writing, or otherwise participating in any contents that is discriminatory, harassing, threatening, pornographic, or obscene. I want you to include some vocabulary that says defamatory remarks against other departments." Nobody has the right to, in my opinion, discuss in any of these formats, what another department is doing, and their opinions on it. To me, that should be in there, so...
Is that in our code of ethics? Is that in our code of ethics?
I'm talking about this policy, I want to see it in this policy. I'm done, and I will now ask you if you want to add too.
Well, you made me ask for something else. I think with the personal...
That's not how you wanted it to work.
Yep.
Personal devices, I'm thinking like, I mean, not necessarily on a meeting, but, I mean, in all honesty, if someone's coming through the door, I don't want to see somebody on a phone checking Facebook, or doing that type of thing, because that, that's how I think of it, as personal devices, not personnel devices, but that's just how I read it.
Thank you. Yes, Tony?
I just wanted to know if you wanted, you wanted to read that, obscene, and inflamatory remarks of other departments, that's just it? Will that suffice?
It may very well if it meets the legal sniff test.
I don't think it...
Yep. I mean, obviously, we've made enough suggestions here tonight, that this has gotta go for another review.
Absolutely.
So, if it passes that, that legal sniff test, whoever's gonna look at it, I just think that that's an important component, the cohesiveness of all these operations.
Won't be bad enough in your coworkers.
Okay. John, you have anything else on that? You, are the ladies good? All the ladies? Yes, sir?
I haven't seen that document, but just listening to you, was there anything in there about, that dealt with deleting things that shouldn't be deleted from town and tourism?
No. No, that's a good point.
That is a good point.
Yep.
Because, yeah...
Could you add that to the, where we can get, that's a good point, Mark, thank you. That is not in there. Is there a shredder in the building?
Yes.
You might want to, you might want to discuss that component too, you know, authorized shredding, just saying, you know, you don't want to see stuff disappear, that, Mark made me think of that, so...
We had a big man come in here to do some major old shredding, like town clerk, kind of put together after so many years.
Right.
The 99-year-old ways for the fire.
It's in the archives.
Okay, good with the media policy? Town manager reports, department head updates, we have some in there. Any comments on any of them?
Just wanted to point out that Tom Lewis has completed all of his certification tests, we've been told he's taken several of them, so...
Congratulations from the board.
Yeah.
Yep, that's good. Calendar, May 6, 5:00 PM, public hearing, overlook, I'm sorry, Keith.
I apologize, I didn't do anything, I just think you have verbal real quick, to notice how back that Verizon Tower has started, the foundation is in place for the tower itself, just wanted to give you a little update. Projection for the rest of the pad to be put in place is end of April, tower delivery second week of May, and full functioning tower by the end of May is what projection is right now. That's, that's update one. Two, Allen Street, supposed to be a meeting on Monday, but it got postponed until the 16th now at 10:30. We're gonna walk through with CMP in Fairpoint and the water district, hopefully Mark can attend, and from that, information that we produced that day in regards to changing plans, the water district also has financing, two options of financing now, SRF got back to them, and they have a grant, or forgiveness loan ability now for the full $565,000 for them, so, on the 16th, after our walkthrough, we'll come back here, I won't be here, but hopefully John can be, or somebody in that regard, they'll discuss the bidding process to get that out as soon as possible. That is, that's our goal. Just so you know, that's front two.
Thank you. What do you wish for?
She said something about, when I was in your office, you got notice that one of your employees had made something on a board?
Oh, yeah. Rebecca got appointed to the Board of Directors of the Maine Town and City Clerk Association, Tax Collectors and Treasurers Association.
That's great.
Oh, good.
That's nice.
Cool. Fabulous. Jeez, I wish we had known that, we would've said, I'd be delighted to watch you was here. Why didn't you say so?
I forgot about it until he starts doing it, and then, he mentioned about Tom, he mentioned about Tom, and then I was like, wait a minute.
Oh, that's good. Congratulations to her.
Yeah.
And to Tom. Any other whispers that...
Well, I didn't want to steal any line light, I didn't know if you were doing something special, so...
Okay, all right. May 6, 5:00 PM, public hearing on Overlook Sidewalk. Here, or school, or wherever you have it? We know.
Sure.
Because it's a selectmen's day, meeting day.
Yeah, let's do it here.
Right, right here. Did you schedule that with them?
Yes. Sorry, we follow you online, but we did discuss the fact that was the projection with state and everything to have them present, so we can discuss.
Have the selectmen's meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Other business, MMA election process, executive committee and VP. I received all of those, this is, this is the letters that came to you, Cindy, that they handed over to me, I assume you, yep. Basically, I just signed the slate, unless I didn't get any feedback that anybody wanted to run for office and go down there for that meeting, so... We have a letter here from, or two, excuse me, let me get to it, give me a sec here, pretty good little letter, from Kate Pofory, to the Poland Springs requesting, hang on, hang on, hang on. Somehow, my stuff is backwards here. I must've done that in my attempt to get all this to... Nope, not there. Who has the letter in front of them, so I don't, here we go, I found it. Dear Heather, this letter is to update you of the town arranges efforts on reconfiguring our downtown parking requirements to improve safety, ADA compliance, and reduce congestion throughout, through our main street. As you know, Ransley's main street parking is comprised of both diagonal and parallel parking. By the way, this was a request from folks at a meeting with, with this group, to ask Poland Springs to participate, since so many trucks are going through, and we're trying to reconfigure downtown streets so that it's safer for everybody involved. So, as you know, Ransley's main street parking is comprised of both diagonal and parallel parking spots on both sides. Over the years, with the increase in vehicle size and increase of commercial trucking operations, i.e. Poland Springs, water carriers, logging trucks, delivery trucks, the community has identified these increases as a major safety concern that detracts from main street businesses and creates excessive congestion in our busy summer months. I would also include, but it's not there, winter, with the snow banks. Ransley Region Economic Opportunity Committee, the town of Ransley is undergoing a project to remove the diagonal spots and replace with parallel. This will result in net loss of upwards to seven spots, will require the town to engineer new handicap spots, reconfigure our crosswalks, and update our ADA compliance. In addition, we would need to replace our lost parking spots with an accessible new parking lot to meet the needs of the residents, visitors, and downtown businesses. We have estimated the total project cost would be $120,000, upwards to. Project is being actively pursued with the hope of a late summer, early, late spring, early summer implementation. The town will be hosting public workshops in the next month in our annual town vote scheduled for mid-June. As with any community, our residents and selectmen are wary of increases in our tax base, and we will appreciate any financial support Poland Springs could bring to the table in a joint public-private partnership. As of today, the town has earmarked $50,000 for parking, which is well short of our total requirements, and we will create a two-year phase implementation as well as a need for grant money. In addition, we feel our truck drivers and contractors would appreciate the safety improvements and needs of passengers as they travel through Ransley on their way to Stradale. Thank you for consideration, and look forward to talking with you soon, Kate. So, we'll see where that goes.
Yeah.
That should be sent out to logging companies and delivery companies as well.
There you go.
Yeah. Send one to MNH.
You know, it is a practice of a number of the nonprofits in town to talk to the bigger trucking entities that enter and exit Ransley each year for support of their...
It would make the roads easier in the summer.
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely, yes, Mark.
With that project, I kind of lost track, did they, have they had a public workshop, or have they scheduled one about this parking?
They came and made a presentation to the board.
I was there for that.
Yeah, and they are scheduled.
They had the little deal down at Ransley Inn also, the kickoff to the downtown revitalization, and there was some...
Right, but that wasn't a public hearing for putting a parking lot in the park.
No, we haven't got to the public hearing, but it's good.
No, because they just met with DOT March 15th.
Right.
So, that's, that was the last, that was, yeah, so, they, nothing has come from that meeting yet.
Okay.
And she stated in the letter that the public workshops are to come.
Yeah, yeah. I've been doing some thinking about it, and I think if we could find some alternatives than to put in the parking, in the town park, we'd be better served over the, over the long haul, because I think we'll want that green space, you know, maybe not our generation, but, you know, one's ahead, and it'll be hard to replace.
Quick. Quick.
That's a whole killer one.
Maybe we should give this letter to Mark or a trucking... Exclamation to Mark.
There you go.
He'd like to contribute something.
Take it, Mark.
We'll charge you for the copy.
I'll give you a little kind donation.
Shelley.
Maybe your team is actually measuring out for the sidewalks this week. I saw them, he was measuring on the corner. So he has been here. Just a little bit of movement.
Thank you. Supposed to be working, not looking at what's going on on the main street. All right, all right, all right, I'm kidding, I'm sorry.
It was on my way to work. It was on the corner over by a park side.
Okay, next is grant fund projects. We have a, a memo to Shelley Lowell from Daryl listing, as her request, all of the projects for seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and what's going to be requested, he thinks, in two thousand and twenty. Okay, so that's all there for your approval. Any questions, comments on that?
It's nice to see it all succinct and checked in.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
Well, it just makes everybody know that what we're doing is moving forward and gives people a savings.
Any select board communications?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to discuss just a couple of thoughts I had with the marijuana ordinance. If no one had anything else they wanted to speak to first.
Can we do one more thing on the waste management?
Go ahead, bring that up, yep. And we'll go over to...
Oh, that was added, please.
Just he realized that I needed to make two changes to the agreement. The first, in section three, I added a line, items as shingles with pricing for hauling and disposal. I missed that on the first one I sent you. The second change was on your signature, I deleted the word interim. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you approved again the agreement with waste management with that addition of the shingles. The same price as everything else.
Okay, yeah.
You need a motion?
Yeah, you should because you already motioned the, you know, the contract. So I just motion it as amended.
So moved.
With the shingles included.
Yeah. Any discussion? On the favor? Select board communications. Go ahead, Cindy.
With the zoning, I, in the appendix on page twelve, I just, I noticed that the industrial district is only included in one. And I don't know why we wouldn't allow, especially if they can have a building of mixed use, why we wouldn't include industrial in the business cultivation and in the business retail. So I don't know if this is something you guys talked about or...
Yeah, but I noticed it.
And the other, my other comment with the zoning is that in the, I don't, at the MMA conference, when we attended the presentation for municipalities regarding marijuana, locations of marijuana establishments, it stated that any, any businesses that involve extraction should be in industrial use only. And within the ordinance on page nine, it indicates that cultivation and manufacturing, due to fire, explosion, and other hazards, including heavy electrical loads, hot lighting fixtures, et cetera, high-pressure extraction methods, that the, that the cultivation, I'm sorry, the marijuana business manufacturing should probably be struck from the commercial district and just in the industrial district. Simply because it's, as outlined in this ordinance, it's a, it's a, it's a dangerous process. It's what was suggested to municipalities that anything involving extraction be in industrial use only and...
Didn't we take extraction right out?
Extraction's a part of the process, yeah.
Extraction, there are different types of extraction and there are some which the state disallows. But we did look at, there are some which use, the state defines certain things as flammable over a certain temperature and CO2 compression and things. So we did try to put that into industrial. As far as the retail, we talked about that. The cultivation and retail and folks felt that industrial, based on our current zoning, this is what the discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, Donnie, was that...
Yep.
Industrial was more like a cement plant or, you know, something. They didn't see a retail business as being part of industrial. That was the reason why it wasn't put in there.
Well, that would make sense, there's no...
I'm just saying, rightly or wrongly, that was what the discussion was, was, was it an industry? And that's why. But, you know, if it, if it's a multi-use building that does, if it's a vertically integrated business, which my understanding is that's what most of them are now, it's not, it's not a standalone piece, then they would have to, I, I think maybe they would have to go in the most restrictive place. So if we, if we were to allow, if they're going to do manufacture and everything and they have to do manufacturing in industrial, then what's the big deal if they have a storefront shop there in the industrial as opposed? But they can't do the other piece in the downtown.
Right. So I just, so I, my suggestion is to add industrial to the business retail simply because of the combination buildings that can exist. Add industrial to the marijuana business cultivation. Industrial's already indicated for the business manufacturing, but strike the commercial district because of the manufacturing methods here that put it in, and it's, it's an industrial type of operation using high-pressure extraction, flammable contents. They have to be checked annually by the fire department, they have to have a NOX box, it just is all...
I think you've already done that, haven't you?
Yeah.
No.
You've moved the two locations to the light industrial park to the industrial area.
In, in the appendix, the only industrial, the only business allowed in industrial is business manufacturing. And I'm suggesting add industrial to retail, add industrial to cultivation for a location for business. Since cultivation is also, it indicates, is also indicated, I mean, just have to read this, number thirteen. Due to fire, explosion, and other hazards inherent in marijuana cultivation facilities and manufacturing facilities, including but not limited to heavy electrical loads, hot lighting fixtures, CO2 enrichment, extraction solvents, high-pressure extraction methods, and flammable contents. It was just, it was recommended by, at the MMA conference, that anything involving extraction is very dangerous and should be in industrial use only.
Okay, let me ask this question. Does everybody fully understand what you just said about that? All right, John, is there, by virtue of putting that warrant article out right now, never mind that part. I, my understanding is that the only place that the...
Retail.
That the retail could go is in the industrial area. Everything else is excluded.
No.
Retail business can go from...
Retail, retail is downtown commercial.
That can go from...
Old commercial.
The Allen Street to the School Street, not School Street, Loon Lake Road.
Yeah. Is excluded. I mean, is, is a part of the downtown.
Because nobody's going to want to put a retail business in another parking park. Nobody knows whatever it is.
Well, if it means it's a combination building, I mean, we've got the longer, we got the airport, that's going to increase traffic down that end. I'm just saying, if, it's either, it's either we make modifications now or we have to present at a town meeting after this is approved without allowing industrial access and without allowing industrial cultivation. I mean, cultivation in the industrial district.
Want to clarify?
Yeah, I think the, the question becomes, when we were looking at this, we were thinking strictly in terms of a retail front store.
Right.
But you can confirm this with Luke and I asked him a question and the business is much, is very vertically integrated, as in they're looking at one site doing multiple things. So again, if, if we're saying, okay, one person has three licenses, you know, they can retail, they can grow, they can manufacture, are they going to go to three different sites or are they going to try to put it all on one site? If they do that, we probably should say, okay, if you're going to do it, it needs to be in the, if you're going to have the industrial component, that's where it should be. But this wouldn't allow them to do that right now because we're saying you can't have a retail shop there. So we may be creating a scenario where we're forcing, and let's be honest, we're, we're limiting it to six licenses. But does that, I mean, that could be, six licenses could be two locations, two vertically integrated locations. Or it could be six distinct spots. So by this, we're kind of forcing it to six distinct spots instead of two. So I mean, you have to think through what makes sense from a business model. I think allowing them to go there would actually be positive.
Allowing them to go there, is it mandating that that's the only place they can be?
Exactly.
And that's the difference.
But it's not allowed right now, is what she's saying.
Correct. So I just want to make sure that you're not pulling one away...
Right, we're not eliminating one and adding this.
Exactly.
Okay.
The only one that she was recommending we eliminate is the manufacturer being removed from commercial manufacturing be only in industrial.
Yeah.
Because of the...
Hazardous nature.
The potential, I'll say it's the potential hazardous nature. Not, not all extraction processes need a garage.
And it's the hazardous nature that is identified within the ordinance. That's what I...
No argument on the identification, none at all. Yeah.
So, so that's, that's one thing I thought could, you know, again, just be a little, have a little foresight as far as making as much use of that industrial.
Word stat.
What does, John, what does that do to what we've done already?
All this has been gone through, you know, code enforcement and also with town attorney. So she would have to look at those kind of changes. Tom's out the rest of the week on vacation, so. And we need this done by Friday, so.
Do we actually need this done by Friday?
State statute.
Okay.
We have to, because of the absentee ballot.
Yeah.
But I, I would think, in listening to you about, you know, maybe someone that, you know, with industrial extraction in some big facility might want to have a retail shop at the, at the plant, is that...
Yeah. That's what...
So if I were coming in here and saying, all right, I can only put this facility in, in the industrial area, but then once I decide I want to do it and I wanted to have a retailer's shop, they could come into the town and ask that we amend the ordinance to allow that as part of his overall development package. And that's a, you know, an amended type of a...
You could have multiple businesses under the same roof.
I, I think in the ordinance, yeah, it says that you...
That the buildings cannot be attached.
No, you could have multiple businesses under one roof in town.
No, no, Mary.
I mean physically, or one.
Actually, yes, it does allow for multiple, but they would have to be owned by the same entity. That's one of the pieces. You couldn't have, you couldn't own one and someone else own one. It's, it's one company. It's, it's just like, I'll, I'll use a horrible analogy, a cheese shop. I mean, you know, they're making the cheese and then they got a retail shop there. It's all one business. It's not, as opposed to, well, I'm growing it, okay, well, I'm going to sell it for you. Well, no, it, it has to be one entity.
Could be the case too, but yeah.
Well, I'm just saying that was the...
One time there was a law where you couldn't have a grow facility and a store or anything in the same building.
That was, and they changed some of that. You can't have, well, I'm not sure, I should check with Luther, but it used to be, until they brought medical under the retail piece, you couldn't have both a medical and a...
Retail.
Retail with the same entrance. They could be in the same building, but they had to have a physical wall between and different entrances. That may still be the case. I mean, so maybe what you do is your grow site is here, you've got to walk out a door and go in. But I mean, it would be one, you know, one plot of property, let's put it that way.
Mark, you had a comment?
I was just going to say, the way I picture it, it's kind of likened to a coffee place that, you know, roast the beans, you know, in the industrial pot there and grind them. And then they have a retail outlet where you can buy the bag of coffee. And they also have a coffee shop and where you can sit there and read the newspaper and drink their coffee too. You know, I think that's the, what I picture is the same kind of integration with the marijuana thing, except you can't have a social club under this ordinance. But you could certainly have a cultivation, a processing, and a retail shop, you know, all right down the line and...
Which would save some money.
To me, with the industrial zone where we have it zoned right now on the side of the airport and tactical power systems there, that thirty-five acres and that stuff, you know, you know, mile and a half of main street, you know, if it was in the, the retail portion was, you know, in the front part of the lot there where people go into the transfer station to stop and buy a bag of pot if they wanted to, you know, I don't see where it's any big inconvenience. And, you know, they may actually make a lot of sense and be more palatable to quite a few other people in town. And like you said, it's just giving them an option. It's not limiting them to that. But they could have it there if they wanted to just have one lot and one tax bill and thought they could generate enough retail sales to make it worth life.
Do you want to...
Hold on.
Go ahead.
The problem is, I don't think you're going to see anybody coming up here and building a facility to grow inside of it. The trend rate now is to go all greenhouses and it's probably going to be on the coast or down south. Because the cost per, the cost is thirty percent less to grow in a greenhouse than to produce a building. So I don't think we're even going to see anything in the industrial park. So if we offer a retail, then it's going to be only a retail in the industrial park and not anything associated with it.
Yeah. You could never have a, I mean, they don't have enough room that we left in main street for a growing facility, which is...
You can't.
You can't.
Nobody's going to invest in a grow facility in Ransley, man.
No.
Well, technology may change it. The issue now is, what Cindy's brought up is there's something we want to move on. And if we do move on it, what can we do?
Not a lot of time left. I think we just leave it the way it is for now. We can make an amendment if we wanted to, or if somebody came to us wanting to put a retail store in the industrial.
Well, let's talk about amendments then. What's the, what's the issue on an amendment? This goes now to town meeting and we make an assumption that it moves forward at the town meeting? I'm sorry?
I, I'm not done with, with what I have for suggestions.
This doesn't specifically say you can't put it in an industrial area. It just says you can put it in the commercial district and downtown commercial district.
Okay. Cindy, go ahead.
The, well, if you look at the chart, it indicates, you know, that's, that's attached to the ordinance. It indicates...
What you can do, what you can't do, I understand that part.
So unless it's here, unless it's listed here that you can put it there...
It's an exclusion.
It's an exclusion. So...
Right.
So that's why I just suggested that. All right.
But if you simply put planning board permit for retail under industrial, then the whole ordinance has to address what it is. That, I guess, time-wise, that's what concerned me. It would be one thing to just have planning board approval for industrial, but we have nothing to go back to on the ordinance itself that addresses that whole issue. Nothing written up that could be done quickly enough to get it, get it in the...
Okay. Just a suggestion for, you know, I just thought it was a little restrictive. I, I didn't know if there was an admission here on, on page ten under enforcement and violations. There are two, there are two listed violations. Any violation of this ordinance, including failing to comply with any conditions, shall be deemed to be a violation of, you know, thirty AMSRA law. Every day a violation exists constitutes a separate violation and this will be included in the CEO's written notification. Okay? And it, what the next one says, says upon such CEO notification, the town can pursue fines and/or penalties. And that isn't included in with this first one. These violations are second, are separate. And both state, you know, that the CEO will notify, but it doesn't state in this first one that the town can pursue fines, can pursue fines or penalties.
Because we had a discussion about this.
Go ahead, yeah.
And we kicked that around and I think the understanding... And, um, we kicked that around and I think the understanding wasn't, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the understanding was we were trying to give the, by, by the CEO, by his, um, regulatory power, we were trying not to restrict what he could and couldn't do. And so maybe we should have added more in there, but we would, we thought because of the way it was defined in his, uh, thing that he would have some of that authority, but I could be wrong. Is that, you remember that discussion, Don? I think that's where we were trying to go with that.
Absolutely.
Yes, I was thinking, I mean, if someone's just gonna get written up, what, what is that? I mean, if there were fines or penalties, then that tends to be a little bit more meaningful.
Discontinuance of. No, it says discontinuance of illegal use of land. They can stop him from doing business, basically.
If that's within the CEO's power within this ordinance, then.
That's the intent is the CEO, whatever power the CEO has.
Okay.
Rather than trying to redefine and say, if he has that power here, then
He does.
we're gonna let him have it here. We're not gonna redefine that.
All right, one, that, perfect. The other thing regarding background checks, um, I, I mean, I've had to have a background check at the school twice now because I coach and whatnot. And it's always been done by the main state police. And I didn't, and it says here, you know, every owner and employee of marijuana business is applying for a licensed shell, contact the Rangel Police Department for the purpose of fingerprinting and criminal background checking. And I just thought it perhaps should be the main state police.
Didn't, something about the state police said they don't, they don't wanna do it.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
I, that's, that's a new addition, cause I, that wasn't in our original.
Right. The state of Maine is requiring that you go to an agency now.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so should this be, um, and I think almost, yeah, there was some, my, the last one, I think there was.
Originally it was a state function that, and it was saying, we have to get the background checked before someone can even apply in Rangel. They have to have been approved by the state, and so they have to have had that level of.
Some kind of thing there.
Now, maybe that's changed, but that was the understanding. They already had to have gone through that. The, the state had run a
And it was, you know.
Due diligence.
It would be more for the employees that work within the building, not the person who has, carries a license.
Correct, and that, that would be the level in which we're.
Right, and the town, and I'm, you know, I think the state police decided, well, we don't wanna have, you know, all these employees having to go figure all this out, let the town police chief or whatever do it. So that was the reasoning.
Within the ordinance, it says every owner and employee of a marijuana business.
Yeah.
And the owner's gonna go through more stringent, cause it has to be approved by the state. Then the employees would have to go to the town and have a background check.
Right, the, the state didn't wanna deal with the employees. They just wanted to deal with the owners.
Okay, and of course, that's at their expense, um.
Employees are up to us, or police chief.
All right, um, I just wish there was no fee that was in there, because I'm just telling you, if that changes, then if we're just saying a hundred dollars, that means someone's gonna have to eat the difference, just saying.
Yeah, as opposed to saying at, you know.
That's why we didn't put fees in ours, because if the thing changes, we left out the
Right.
selectmen in the term.
And the fees are totally on a separate schedule.
Right, exactly.
Whereas if something happens and it's just taking a lot of the PD's time, maybe they, they charge more.
Yeah, well, the selectmen, we do fees and penalties, so.
I just, I just have a couple more. So this, let's see. I, um, I, I would just, so on, on page eight, under, um, the odor mitigation system, it says all marijuana cultivation establishments shall have an odor mitigating, mitigating system. Maybe it should say manufacturing and cultivating establishments?
I'm not sure, we're, um, I, I don't know the process, but from my research, the, the biggest odor comes from the cultivation and not the manufacturing. But I could be wrong in that, okay?
But the manufacturing involves all the, all of the, you know, harmful chemicals and whatnot, so I would just think that that.
I think that's just taken and processing for sale.
Well, manufacture can involve.
Right.
It can involve simply, I mean, it can be as simple as they have to take the bud, they have to extract the marijuana from it. And sometimes there's cold water extraction, there's high pressure extraction, and then they're gonna make it into whatever they're selling it as.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, so it could be a very complex process or it could be a very simple process, I mean.
And all of those processes aren't allowed in this ordinance?
This, if the state allows, if there are a couple of extraction processes, uh, the state does not allow. I think using butane, I forget which ones now, and that this, because they were very, um, explosive, or I mean, there was some very real concerns, the state said, nope, can't use this extraction method, so we didn't have to deal with it.
It's, the odor tends to be the most controversial piece, so I just, I, I don't know why, what it would hurt to say that we, you know, why we can't include manufacturing establishments. The other thing, so it says all marijuana cultivation establishments shall have an odor mitigating, mitigation system installed that has been improved and stamped by a main licensed engineer indicating that the system will provide sufficient, which is subjective, odor control measures. I, I would just like a clause added to the extent there is no adverse effect on any neighbors.
On any what?
Neighbors.
Oh, well, that's the point of this whole thing, kinda.
But it doesn't state, what is sufficient?
Well, I, I did ask Luke, I said, well, how much does one of these systems cost? He's talking a hundred thousand dollars for this odor thing, so for a hundred thousand bucks, it better work.
But that's not what it says.
I know that's not what it says.
It says sufficient.
That's the background.
Um, so I just feel like an extra qualifier, um, you know, they, you know, in case the, say they've got an odor mitigation system in there and it starts failing. And the odor, I mean, it's entirely possible, and then they're like, no, I put my odor mitigation system in here and it's stamped, and I'm all set according to your ordinance.
I think that raises the question though of, I'm not sure where that piece, that piece of regulation gets written. And then let me just, um, what, what, you know, um, I don't know how you define, just like in noise ordinance, we talked about decibel levels and things, and people get into, well, you know, we have to have a meter, we have to calibrate it. I don't know, Cindy, and I, I agree with you, but I don't know how we would put that into, I mean, you're right, it is somewhat subjective, but how can I make that objective is my, my question.
Does the state have specifications and?
I do not know. I mean, that's, that's, that's an honest question, and if you, if they do, then if, if the, if the system isn't meeting those specifications, I think that'd fall on the CEO to come along and say, hey, your, your odor mitigation system isn't working and therefore, but I don't know how you define if it's working. I think that's the concern is because it is somewhat subjective.
Right, and if you don't have a metering test to begin with, well, it's like.
That's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm not sure how do we, how do we objectively define that? That's the question.
Right, and that would eventually go to the code enforcement route, because he's responsible, once they set up the business. To make sure they're doing it.
He has to have, he has to have the tools to be able to enforce it.
Right, well, it's the same thing with the noise.
Yeah, go ahead, Cindy.
We have a noise ordinance, we don't have an odor ordinance.
The question I ask you, is there a mechanism by which we can create an ordinance that is defined by a metering system that says this is too much, this is not enough?
I do have an odor, a draft odor ordinance from another municipality.
No, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is what's the tool? Policemen have radar gun that's been held up in court. A noise ordinance has decibel levels. What is the tool?
I think, I think if you can smell the product outside their property boundary lines and it's offensive, then.
The key word is offensive.
Yes, I mean, the smell should be within, you know, contained and sufficiently diffused, so it doesn't, you know, affect the, you know, the surrounding area.
There are, there are meters which measure in pots per million and
Sure.
quality, I mean, but that is a fairly costly, I mean, EPA does those types of studies all the time, you know.
Which way the wind's blowing is gonna determine some.
And again, that's my purpose, that's my purpose for bringing it up, Don. Yet we can't control where the wind blows, hence we need, you know, an odor mitigation system that is, that, that's, that's going to work, or they have to correct it. I think I'm looking for some kind of way, if a problem arises, we have nothing here that allows the code enforcement officer to say, you know, you're in violation of this ordinance. Your odor mitigation system isn't working. It's having an adverse effect on the, the wedding going on at Bald Mountain Camps, um.
Well, that would be impossible, because there's no way down there they could have a manufacturing facility.
I'm, I'm just using that as an example.
Point taken.
Yeah.
What other points do you have for me?
The, let's see, Tom, this had to do with the, the community grows and the town of Acton, this was handed out. This is, this is, was handed out also at the MMA convention. And it, so they did, they did take this and, and incorporate it in our, in our ordinance. However, there's a little wording modification that says, it says no person who is not a licensed marijuana business shall be permitted to cultivate marijuana plants or seedlings on a parcel or tract of land on which he is not domiciled. The Acton, the, the model that has been given us for us to, for towns to use is no person shall be permitted to cultivate marijuana plants or seedlings on a parcel or tract of land on which he or she is not domiciled. A mari, you know, you're not gonna live in your marijuana business. I mean, you can't, so.
There you are.
It's, so I don't, I'd like to strike um, no person who is not, and, and go by what the, the, the model that has been handed out to municipalities to use.
What's the model say?
It doesn't qualify. It says, it says no person shall be permitted to cultivate marijuana plants or seedlings on a parcel or tract of land on which he or she is not domiciled.
Does that understand?
Yours says, no person who is not a licensed marijuana business, that's what's added.
The, and the, there is a, the reason for that is because an individual can grow their own, it's for, this is a retail commercial, I'm not disagreeing, but this is a retail commercial ordinance. And so we have no control over what an individual does. That's already defined by state, so that was the reason that wording is there.
Yeah, it's, um, this, this has to do, this doesn't fall, this, this covers a loophole, because this doesn't fall within the medical marijuana
Right.
laws nor the recreational marijuana. So there was, um, you know, there was a, uh, and so this, what this does is prohibit someone for having a, a cultivation business without a license. So if they can grow six marijuana plants for people, you know, for people who hold twenty marijuana cards, that, that's.
By state law, they're disallowed though, and my understanding, but I, my understanding is by state law, they can't. But it would be worth us checking, but I think we did check that in my understanding.
All I'm asking, okay, all I'm asking, okay, this, this was incorporated in to our ordinance with a clause added regarding it being not a licensed marijuana business. I would just like it to say what it was, what was handed out to us at the main municipal association meeting for guidelines for municipalities.
And that all could have changed.
I didn't create this, it's handed out
No, no.
at the MMA convention.
Yeah, but how long ago was the MMA convention?
It was in October.
Yeah.
But, Donnie, this is.
I'm just saying, they've changed half of the stuff we wrote in here between.
Donnie, but this is in our ordinance.
I know.
I'm just asking it to match.
Okay, but I don't know that the thing you're looking at is even viable anymore, cause they keep changing it.
All the more reason for us to wait a year before we put this out to the voters, but those.
We can wait ten years and it's still not gonna satisfy people.
This isn't the time or place.
Those are my, those are my points.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Yep.
So can, um, can we ask, and it is the time or place, Dave, because it's a selectman's meeting.
Going over this right tonight, where we've had all these other meetings, you had time to present this, you're going over it in.
No, what we had, this is all stuff that is, most of the stuff has been brought up before, and it was sent back to the ordinance committee. They made, they, they made limited changes, so I'm following up, because we, as the board of selectmen, have the power to amend, to make changes to this ordinance as a body. So I'm, and that, and that's what I'm doing. And that's what we're expected to do, is to discuss and not.
Right, the problem we have is that. Never seen a light a day.
Okay, anything else, Donnie? All set?
Done.
Um, we've already voted that the ordinance be moved to town meeting.
Exactly, and we've, we've edited the budget today, and we can edit any ordinance today.
Listen, we could edit, edit every ordinance in this town if you wanna sit down and go through them. They're, they're, none of the ordinance, I've been on this ordinance committee for twenty years. There is no ordinance that is perfect the first time around.
No, we just spent thousands of dollars sending ordinances to the attorney to correct.
And the attorney's issue right now.
Was okay, so I don't have a problem. I'm just, yeah.
All set?
I'm done.
Okay.
The issue is the review time.
Yeah, the problem is, is we're rushing an ordinance to vote that hasn't been properly vetted, so it's, it's, that's, and I'm entitled to my opinion, Donnie, I know you don't like it. We've had this discussion that we just agree to disagree on this.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm fine.
You know, I'm fine with it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna voice my concerns, it's of record, um, and I have a right to do that.
Right, and I'm, I just wanna clear too, that I'm making sure that you have that opportunity. And you are having that opportunity, so again, well, I wanna make some clarifications. So turn to John, we've got everything moved to where it needs to be for the warrant and the ordinances, which were voted upon earlier and passed.
Yeah, and at this point, all what we've written for the ordinances have been approved by the town attorney. So you, you, any changes to the ordinances, you gotta go back and get that re-approved.
And the issue is timing, that's my concern.
I, I just don't think with two days left, that it's, it's really realistic for the ballot. But, you know, on the other hand, Cindy, you got some valid points. There's no reason why you can call special town meetings anytime, you can make amendments to these things. And, and like Donnie said, even like the legislature, when they first passed this stuff, they voted these, you know, the first one was like a seventy-something page marijuana bill, knowing full well that it was going back to the very next session as they found bugs to make amendments. That's how these new things work in reality. So I, I don't think it's gonna be that big of a, an issue if we find problems and come up with corrections to make amendments anytime down the future as we find them, so.
Yeah, I just, but if, would they be, are they grandfathered then? So if we've got, uh, you know, a major odor, odor issue and it's not covered?
It's covered because the code enforcement officer can go over there and say, listen, you guys, it smells here, you gotta do something different.
And he would have that covered in his conditional use permit to start with, that, you know, have to deal with the, or whatever's in here. Certainly if it breaks and that's part of his permit, you're gonna have teeth to be able to get it to be fixed.
And ultimately, it's gonna be the planning board of the sites.
It's, so it would need to be in the conditional use permit?
Yeah, and they're pretty good about listing all those things. Planning board's been very thorough in, you know, the different, different, if someone applies for a permit, they can put restrictions on that that might be a little bit beyond
Yeah.
what's actually in the ordinance. But, okay, we'll let you do this, but you gotta do this and that and the other thing.
But if they're operating within the parameters of this ordinance, what, what conditional uses could be put on it? I mean, if that's.
Planning board can do.
Depend, every situation's different, Cindy, every proposal's gonna be different.
Yeah.
Every location's different, and they're all gonna create circumstances that would dictate what conditional uses we may not apply.
May an officer suggest, I don't wanna be the dead horse, but just a thought. Is it possible for the planning board to put in their conditional use concerning odor and say, pending an adoption of an odor ordinance? I'm just asking that question, is that, you know, or is that open another can or? I don't know, I'm just asking that question. You know, trying to address an issue which is, I think, a valid issue, um.
Well, I think if you put in the permit that they have to have sufficient odor control, and their neighbor from a mile and a half away is like infested with the odor, then that's not sufficient odor control. So the code enforcement officer's gonna have some jurisdiction as to what sufficient is gonna be.
You know, just like if you have garbage in the yard. You know, just like if you have garbage in your yard, eventually you're gonna make them move it. Out of.
All right.
And then there's all, so the nuisance statute is state law, you know, and that covers a whole gamut of nuisance. So, and you go to court and if it's a nuisance, a valid nuisance, then we can maybe get correction.
Court costs money.
It does. It's a remedy.
It does. Are we gonna go over anything new?
Yes, just, just.
Promise.
Just wanted to, Donnie mentioned about the state making all these changes since we were working on it. And I was kinda amused today, the woman from the medical marijuana thing at the state called me back and she told me that in January, they changed the law that these dispensaries don't have to be nonprofit anymore, but they've been unable to figure out how to come up with any language that makes a nonprofit a non-nonprofit, so that's in quotation. Yeah, that's their intent. I just kind of thought that was.
Well, I always, I always smile at when people say, in the infinite wisdom of the state.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, do we have, um, is it gonna, do you want us to do any movement on this, Cindy? Are you looking?
I, you know, I, I was.
You wanna try a motion or what do you wanna do?
I was just hoping to get this act, you know, again, it was, it was this language that was provided. And I guess I would, I will make a motion to, you know, amend the ordinance to adopt the Acton Community Grows language, um.
Well, then you just kill this ordinance, cause it's not gonna get done between now and.
It's a motion. You gonna need a second?
I'm sorry.
All right.
Shut up.
I mean, this would just be a quick look. I mean, it's, everyone has this. But anyway, page four, last sentence of paragraph thirty-eight A eight, under license required.
Moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Close? Reason for my opposition is that I want what we have to go to town vote. And to me, there's a distinct possibility that the town is gonna say no to this, in which case, it's a moot point. All of your points will be brought up again when they bring it back around. I could be wrong.
Could be wrong.
I could. All right. You also received tonight at request, um, road construction, loan breakdown and roads completed and whatnot. It's there for your perusal. We need to go, I need to, um, go into executive session.
Okay, just on the road construction, when we get closer to that, can we start shopping around for like CD rates or something like that with draw periods that we can do if that, um, other projects not gonna be done?
Is this a bank, uh, suggestion where you're looking for business?
No.
I'm just joking. This is a joke.
Let's invest the money smart and maybe get a more of a return on our investment where we're gonna be paying interest on what we borrow. I'm just saying, that's all I'm saying, is that.
We're just paying. Thanks, everyone.
You could talk to John about it. John's works, he's, he's had a.
For main bond bank issues, you know, those are usually on the.
No, no, I mean, um, with our, with our construction loan, our grace period, our non-interest period.
It's running up. It's coming up. So I say that, you know, that there's more projects that need to be done, but we've gotta make sure that that's on our radar to max it out before that date. And I don't care if it's that date that it gets maxed out.
Yeah.
And then have a game plan on where you're gonna invest that money until we can actually start the project.
Well, we're not gonna invest it in foreign stocks.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I'm just saying, and make sure you can do draws on it and things like that, so you can take the money out, so.
Thank you for that point. I need a motion to go into executive session.
We have one more thing.
No.
Yes, I have one more thing. Selectmen, I can speak. I wanna tell Cindy thank you. I just appreciate her actually looking at it. I do think we feel with the budget and all the stuff that we have, have been really rushed because we've been juggling around everyone being here. So I, I, I get what you're saying and I think that that should also be highlighted. Anyways, done.
I'll make the motion, go into an executive session, MRSA Title I, Chapter thirteen, Subchapter one, Subsection four oh five, Sublegal Council.
So, all in favor?
Yep.